Item number two on the agenda, would anyone, does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Will someone give me a motion to approve the, excuse me?
Make a revision?
Yeah.
Make a closer revision?
Well, that's going to be the consent agenda, so then we're going to go to, approve the agenda. What did you say, the revision on the?
So I'll, at the, let me do this, then you can do that, okay? You want to go first?
Well, because I think I should have done this before. I still have a question about routine hiring.
Oh, you're pulling something from the consent agenda, okay.
What item?
What is it?
B.
Seven B?
Seven B.
Okay, noted.
Thank you.
Chair, well, I'd like to, at your request, make a motion to amend the agenda to move item eight A, good news, up to in between items four and five.
Okay.
So we'll insert good news and renumber accordingly, Bonnie or whoever is doing this.
Yeah.
So we're going to put good news right after public comment and board reflection.
Okay. So good news, item A, eight A.
Yeah, moves up into between four and five.
Great, thank you.
I don't have any more changes.
All right. So an approval to approve the consent agenda with pulling item B. All those in favor?
Well, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion, sorry, thank you. Second on there. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Kari, a second. Commissioner Avanjik, thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed, any abstentions? The agenda passes, thank you, sorry. Next on the agenda is executive session. Commissioner Wick?
Okay. We'll tighten this up a bit, thanks to our council over there. I'd like to make a motion to consider executive session under Title I Vermont Statutes 313A7 for a student disciplinary matter.
Great.
Is this a second?
Second is Pillsbury. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, we'll move into executive session. And we plan to be back at six fifteen, I would imagine. Thank you.
The board has just come out of executive session to conclude a student disciplinary matter, and has taken no action, and now we're back in public session, agenda item number four, which is public comment, correct? Chair, will?
Yes.
Hi, welcome Jonathan.
Aye.
Welcome to, thank you, you have joined the call for you are the only.
Good evening, BSD School Board. Last we met, last I saw you, we, I was talking about my students' Bernie group. I can happily say that I've received green light from Ms. Wool, however, I have still, I still wait to receive the green light from, from Principal Green. However, if he chooses to still, if his answer is still no of the group, there is, there are some legal aspects regarding the matter. One of them being, according to the ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union of Washington, first of all, is a school's decision to deny access, however, must actually be based on the school group's failure to observe school policies rather than the group's message on the content of its mission. And then, the school can only deny access to the group if it can demonstrate that the student, student club's own activities are interfering with the school's ability to maintain Now, although the American Civil Liberties Union does not receive government funding, and it's a nonprofit, it is a nationwide organization that has filed both state and federal cases, and excluding the, excluding the Department of Justice, has appeared before the Supreme Court more than any other organization. And thirdly, according to the US Department of Education's definition of, of the, this is the Equal Access Act, where the, the access, the act does not permit schools to ban groups or suppress student speech based on unpopularity or the message, of message, or unfounded fears that the group may initiate violence or disruption, where the material and substantial interference is caused not by the group itself, by those opposed, by those opposed to the group's formation or message, the disruption will not be, will not justify suppressing the group. What, I recognize the concerns that Mr. Green has, for example, biggest one being that people may disagree, and I get that, people are entitled to their own opinion. And, however, as, as administration, their responsibility is to ensure that the rights of students are respected, especially freedom of expression. And if, in the event that students of the group choose to debate or argue with their peers, first off, what would happen would be, I would do whatever I can, my power, to resolve it in-house, which I would, first of all, I would...
Jonathan, could you please wrap it up, please?
Yeah, okay. I would first give them a warning, and then, you know, they would be taken out of the campusing activities, and then, yeah, so, there we are.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Would anyone else like to speak at public comment?
All right, seeing none, we'll move, okay.
Christine?
I have nothing prepared, and we showed up tonight, and I'm so proud to be here, because the high school girls soccer team is here, and this incredible group of Edmonds Middle School students are here, and I think it's like a confluence of events and thinking and activism that I feel really proud of, to be a parent and be part of, and I just want to commend everyone and all the students who are here, and everything they're doing. It's incredible to experience it, so thank you, that's it.
Thank you. For, for the record, could you speak your name?
So, oh, sorry, Christine McConnell, Word five, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at public comment?
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to board reflections. Are there any board reflections at this time? All right, thank you. I would just add that I will make sure that Principal Green meets with you, Jonathan, and I'll follow up with him and you in an email, so thank you. Next, was item number five, the girls' BHS soccer team, equal pay.
No.
We changed the U of M. Thanks. So for those representatives, we want to acknowledge the good news. Russ Elick, our communications specialist, is here. Thank you, Russ.
After school, some people say.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, false alarm, we are going to do good news, but the first thing, we're going to start with, fine, would you pull up the after-school report, please?
So on the agenda, we had modified the agenda before everybody was here, so that the good news portion of the superintendent's report would be, we would discuss at this time, so thank you.
So we just want to highlight, and you can find this on our website, www.bstdvt.org. In late October, a new report that was worked on by more than 5,000 police chiefs, sheriffs, and prosecutors, was released, and it spotlighted research that shows the impact of after-school programs on improving public safety, increasing student academic performance, and saving taxpayer dollars, among other outcomes. The report is called "From Risk to Opportunity: After-School Programs Keep Kids Safe When Juvenile Crime Peaks." As part of the report, this council highlighted one program in each state. It should shock no one here that the program highlighted in Vermont was Burlington School District's own after-school program. If you recall, at the report that we presented in June, this is a program that is five-star rated, it's a program that we run in-house, and it is a program with over a 91% parent satisfaction rate. It does great work. Director Gallese, we are grateful to her, she took the opportunity, in addition to highlighting her program, she really tied it into the work that her program is doing in restorative practices. As Burlington School District moves to become a restorative district, it's imperative that all of our programs, all of our schools, even we're doing work in central office, but that everyone is on the same page together. So, we are grateful, I feel like, as a communications specialist, I haven't done the greatest job of trying to tell the community what we're doing in terms of restorative practices, and so Director Gallese used this opportunity to tell the nation that Burlington School District has embraced RP work, and we are doing it in an amazing way in Burlington School District. So that's number one.
Thank you.
Would you pull up the video? So this second thing that we are going to talk about, we have our BHS Girls Varsity Soccer Team is here today. We're going to show you your video first, and then have you come up, okay?
Over the summer, I was really inspired after watching the US Women's National Team's performance in the World Cup, and Megan Rapinoe's whole thing with equal pay got me thinking that we should do a team dress-up day, where everyone wears shirts that say hashtag equal pay, and like, spread the message around school, and we're lucky enough to connect with an organization called Change the Story, that works for women's economic equality, and so they helped us actually design Nike jerseys that say hashtag equal pay on the front. This is something that's really affecting a huge population in the world, and it's personally affecting a lot of the girls at our school, and will affect us later, and so it was really empowering to know that we have people behind us that will support us in this, and it shows that we can actually make change.
So right now, in Vermont, the wage gap is 16 cents, which means that women earn 84 cents to the dollar that the men do, men do on average. We're working to close that, that's been a gap that's been held steady for the last 20 or more years, and we're looking to close it more rapidly, so that when the BHS girls' soccer players are out in the world working full-time, they will be making equal pay for equal work.
Can we have the girls' soccer team come up?
Hi. Good job.
So, I've been told that our team is worn out, and they are choosing not to speak tonight, but I want to invite everyone to go to our website, where I've done my best to try to recap what you all have been through in the last week, and so, if you haven't heard, our BHS Girls Varsity Soccer Team went viral just a few weeks ago. At this point, a couple of members of the soccer team were wearing their equal-paid jerseys underneath their game jerseys, and during a game, they took off their game jerseys to reveal equal pay, and got carded for it. Burlington Free Press, we're grateful that they were there, probably the best headline ever written is "BHS Girls Stand Up For Equal Pay And Get Carded," and from there, it went crazy. I just want to personally, I have a note from the superintendent, who couldn't be here tonight, but I want to say thank you to each of you, I am so proud to watch the way that you each conducted yourselves, and the work that you did with Change the Story. It was incredible to see you dedicated to each other through this process, that you didn't let anything come between you as a team or as people, that you worked through those issues, that you stayed dedicated to your studies, which made the superintendent also very happy, and that you stayed dedicated to playing soccer at the highest level in Vermont. So, without further ado, I want to read a brief statement from the superintendent, says, "Tonight, we are joined by our world-famous Burlington High School Girls Varsity Soccer Team." You can clap. What started as a small effort to highlight Vermont's gender wage gap went international when four of our team members received a yellow card penalty after they celebrated scoring a goal by removing their game jerseys to reveal custom-made hashtag equal-pay jerseys that they were wearing underneath. In the following days and weeks, the members of the soccer team participated in more than a dozen interviews, including live segments on Anderson Cooper and the HLN Network, an opportunity to be on NPR's All Things Considered, stories in international outlets, outlets like The Guardian and Global Citizen, and of course, a freezing cold interview in the dark on even colder bleacher seats for Good Morning America. Through it all, the team remained focused on each other. When some teammates wanted to be more active in the interviews, the team worked together to make sure voice was given to all who wanted to be heard. They also stayed focused on their soccer team winning two playoff games, and perhaps most important to a superintendent, I guess I already said this, they stayed dedicated to their classwork and studies, and even helped other instructors in the district to create, to create curriculum around the wage gap and other equity initiatives. I hope the school board and our community will join me in thanking our Burlington Varsity Girls Soccer Team for honoring themselves, their team, their community, and their school district, and for spreading the message that it is time to close the wage gap, not just in Vermont, but everywhere. Do you want a picture with the chair? Can I grab that real quick?
Sure.
Quick, quick photo op, I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't.
You too, Russ, why would you have?
No, I'm in the background for this, thank you. That's been the goal.
Russ, get in here.
Russ, across here.
You were Mr. Good Morning America.
Super.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[1220.59]
Students of color make up twenty-eight percent of the EMS community. Flying the BLM flag not only recognizes students of color but also creates opportunities for the community to engage in important discussions about why it is important to publicly recognize that Black Lives Matter.
This proposal is supported by scientific research efforts which were supported by UVM researchers. Data that we collected as sixth graders in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year found that thirty-six percent of students agree that EMS students engage in racial discrimination. White and black students equally agree on this question. Forty-seven percent of black students agree that students are discriminating against other colors based on race. Roughly one-third of white students and one-third of black students agree that EMS teachers engage in racial discrimination.
These data present a serious need for actions around making sure that students of color can feel welcome, safe, and valued within the EMS community.
Although there are, although there are many changes that need to take place in order to achieve such a goal, the EMS YPAR collective feels that feels that raising the Black Lives Matter flag is one major step in the right direction.
By approving this proposal to raise the BLM flag at EMS, the district would validate the difficult barriers and the hostility that students of color and their allies experience at EMS and schools all across the nation.
The Black Lives Matter movement aims to eliminate racial profiling, excessive use of force by police against people of color, and racial bias in the criminal justice system.
In American society, Black Lives and other marginalized identities have fallen victim to the systemic inequality that is inherent within our public and private institutions, hence the need for such a movement.
Therefore, it's cr- critical in today's learning environment that students of color not only feel protected but promoted and welcomed within our schools.
We understand that some people in our community will inevitably express, express backlash regarding this proposal. However, the three hundred fifty-eight student and staff signatures we have collected on our petition to support this proposal demonstrate that roughly eighty per- eighty-seven percent of the EMS community is in support of this action. We would happily submit this petition to the board for verification.
As Burlington High School student leaders expressed last year in their proposal to raise the Black Lives Matter flag, by being among the whitest states in the country, we have an ob- obligation to further the well-being of our brothers and sisters of colors so that their skin color is no longer a predictor of socioeconomic, academic, and health outcomes.
We agree wholeheartedly with this sentiment and hope to do our part in this effort by flying the BLM flag at our school, too.
We propose that beginning in spring two thousand twenty, the EMS Black Lives Matter flag be raised each year during Black History Month and that remains flown until summer vacation. It's our hope that EMS community will continue this project until the day that marginalized students and their allies agree that there is no longer a need to bring attention to systemic racial issues that disproportionately harm students of color.
Below, we have provided statements from EMS students who urged the flag to be flown.
If we, if we did put one up, it would show that everyone is welcome here and that we're not excluding anyone. EMS Grade Eight Student.
We want everyone in Burlington, Vermont to know that Edmonds respects everyone no matter the color of their skin, and inside Edmonds, everyone should feel sta- safe. EMS Grade Eight Student.
I want to feel wanted. EMS Grade Eight Student.
Thank you for considering our proposal. I hope you see how raising the BLM flag would benefit all students at Edmonds Middle School.
And now each member of the YPAR team has something to say.
Hi, I'm Adrielle. I'm an eighth grader at EMS. Some of you have asked us, why should a public school system supported by all Burlington taxpayers raise the flag of an anti-racism movement? The reason is simple, because taxpayer-supported public schools have helped start racism in our country, maintain racism throughout our history, and reinforce racism now. Public school systems have a responsibility to clean up the mess that they helped create.
Hi, I'm Walter. I'm a student at Edmonds, I'm in eighth grade. Uh, here's an example of how our schools have always been racist. At the very beginning, when taxpayers and school leaders created public schools four hundred years ago, they decided that schools would be racist. Only white males could attend.
Hi, I'm Greta. I'm in eighth grade at EMS. Here's an example of how schools have been racist throughout our history. After the Civil War, when taxpayers and school leaders allowed black children to go to school, they decided that black children would go to segregated schools and receive far less funding than white schools. Even after schools were desegregated following the Civil Rights Movement, taxpayers and school leaders decided that thousands of black teachers would lose their jobs, not the white teachers. We still have far too few black teachers today.
I'm Miriam, an eighth grader at Edmonds. Here's an example of how schools reinforce racism now. Recent peer-reviewed research shows that teachers are more likely to perceive black children as misbehaving in classrooms than white children, even when the kids are doing the exact same behavior.
Hi, I'm Isaac. I'm an eighth grade student at Edmonds. Uh, and here's another example of how schools reinforce racism now. Recent peer-reviewed research shows that white teachers are more likely to perceive white students as college-grady than black students, even if the black students have the same grades and test scores as white students.
Hi, I'm Ifa. I'm an eighth grader at EMS. Here's another example of how our education system reinforces racism now. Peer-reviewed research shows that college professors at public institutions are more likely to respond to emails from students with white-sounding names than students with black-sounding names.
Hi, I'm Keats, a sixth grade student at EMS. Um, here's an example of how schools reinforce racism now. Today, in two thousand nineteen, just like during segregation, predominantly white schools are far better funded than predominantly black schools.
Hi, I'm Petra, an eighth grade student at EMS. The taxpaying people of color in our community deserve a school board that's working against the historical legacy of racism in our school, not one that's ignoring it.
Hi, I'm Laniere. I'm an eighth grade student at Edmonds Middle School. If you live in this system of white supremacy, you are either fighting the system or you are complicit. There is no neutrality to be had towards systems of injustice. It is not something you can just opt out of. Igioma Iluo.
So let's raise the flag.
Thank you, thank you very much, Edmonds Middle School students and your families and, uh, your teacher, Mr. Demink, Jeremy Demink, who is here tonight. Can you explain to us again the acronym, just for the audience here, YPAR, and how it was created? Mr. Demink, or? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Demink. I'm a teacher at Edmonds Middle School, and I have the privilege of, uh, working with these, this amazing group of kids, um, two or three times a week. And I just want to point out, this is all student-driven. They created everything. They have done both quantitative and qualitative research. They've coded data. It's been an amazing experience as a teacher to see the, the work of these kids and what they've done. Um, but YPAR is, it stands for Youth Participatory Action Research, and it's, um, a project that I'm teaming with the University of, um, Vermont to, with a couple of amazing researchers, and that's, that's what we do here, is that we're trying to end some of the systemic injustices that are going on in our school district and our school systems.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Wick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Edmonds Middle School's YPAR's request that we raise the Black Lives Matter flag at Edmonds.
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Mark Jip? And any question, discussion? Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I don't know if it was also the intention of the, of YPAR to, um, have the flag raised at Hunt as well, but I'd just like to include Hunt in the, um, activity of raising the Black Lives Matter flag.
So, should we, I mean, Hunt, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I know Hunt isn't here, and I wouldn't, I would assume they'd, I feel a little uncomfortable amending the motion without a little discussion on that because Hunt is not here to speak.
We could amend the motion as an opportunity for them to, next time.
So, right, so Chair Wall suggesting perhaps that we add to the motion, sort of, uh, provide Hunt with an opportunity to make a similar request, but tonight we, we approve the request that's before us.
Um, so then I guess I would amend it to say, um, that we include Hunt in the activity per their approval.
Um, just speaking to the clarity and emotion, Robert's rules, how would you foresee, what would signify their approval? I mean, I just, it's, it's not that I'm opposed, I think one group has come to speak to Edmonds tonight, and we haven't heard Hunt reps. I think Hunt could have an equal opportunity, maybe less, less formal.
So I think, point of order, um, I'm trying to, um, provide language to amend the motion, and we're not in discussion yet because it needs a second or an acceptance as a friendly amendment, so.
Okay, so.
Are you asking for clarification on the language, or are you asking, are you opining on the amendment?
Well, we, we have an amendment on the table, it's been seconded, we're discussing that amendment, and so I.
Oh, it did get a second?
It did.
Okay.
So, we.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that it got a second.
Okay, so, no problem. The amendment on the table has to do with motion to approve EMS, sorry, Edmonds Middle School's YPAR's request that we raise the Black Lives Matter flag at Edmonds. That's what we're discussing at the moment.
Well, what happened to the amendment?
There was no amendment. You, you are out of order, Commissioner Curry, um, we're discussing the.
Motion.
Motion on the table.
Right, and I'm just asking about amending the motion.
You want to make a motion to amend the motion?
Well, that's the amendment procedure, is when you want to amend a motion.
If there's a second, so.
That's why I was asking if it had a second. The chair should ask for a second to the amendment in order to discuss the amendment, and then you vote on the amendment, and then you go back to the motion.
So we're waiting on a second for Commissioner Curry's amendment. Commissioner Sowers, thank you for seconding that amendment.
Is the amendment clear to the minute taker?
Uh, I have to review the tape because I, yeah, superintendent's calling in, and that's who I was talking to.
Point of order, could you restate the proposed new motion that you're proposing so that it's all clear when we discuss your amendment?
Sure, so I move to amend that the motion include Hunt in the activity of raising the Black Lives Matter flag. Should the Hunt student body agree? If that's friendly to the seconder.
Commissioner Sowers, thank you.
So now there's discussion on.
Yes.
Whether to approve the.
Great.
Amendment.
We'll move to discussion on moving the amendment as Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Sowers present. Any discussion? Commissioner, uh, Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Wall. Uh, one of the things I was impressed with, with YPAR is the research and the survey that, that they did. Um, and so I think that the language Commissioner Curry put forward, uh, is too nebulous, too, too subjective. Either, I would recommend, I would be in favor either more specific language of what that student body support means, or, um, or open the possibility for Hunt to present.
Commissioner Gulick, yeah?
Yeah, as a new North End commissioner, I would also like to frankly just stick with the, the, uh, initial motion, and maybe have the chair invite informally, uh, Hunt Middle School students to present at a future school board meeting, when they're ready, if and when they're ready to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wall. Anyone else?
So now we vote.
All right.
We vote on whether to accept the amendment.
Yep. So the amendment we're going to vote on, uh, I'll take a vote, um, to vote on the amendment that Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Sowers presented, that we, the wording is include Hunt, should the Hunt students wish to raise the Black Lives Matter flag. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, so the nays have it, so the motion does not get passed.
So, back to the original motion.
Yep, now we're back to the original motion. Commissioner Wick?
I, uh.
Commissioner Fisher, question?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So, the motion that you made, Commissioner Wick, did not match the written proposals, specifically on timing.
Right.
So, uh, thank you for clarifying. My motion was intended to match it, um, but I think we should be explicit on timing. What's your understanding of the timing? I don't have it in front of me. And if anyone, Mr. Demink, do you want to clarify?
No, I can read it. So, uh, we propose that beginning in spring two thousand twenty, the EMS BLM flag be raised each year during Black History Month, and that it remains flown until summer vacation.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
My motion intended to incorporate that by reference. Um, I did say motion to approve EMS YPAR's request that we raise the flag. So, Commissioner Fisher, uh, does, does anyone object to the fact that what the motion on the table is, is consistent with exactly what Edmonds is asking, which is to say, starting in spring two thousand twenty, during Black History Month, and continuing through to summer, uh, the, the first day of summer vacation? Okay, thanks for clarifying.
So we'll.
Chair Wall.
Commissioner Wick, Fisher?
So, uh, I just have a couple things to say. Um, I've had a great dialogue with the YPAR team over the past few, uh, past week. Um, I think it's an easy decision to say, I personally, Mike Fisher, support Black Lives Matter. The students support Black Lives Matter. The board supports BLM. Fly the flag. I think that as a board member, our role is to ask the difficult questions, which is what I'm going to do. I, I've done some research about other Vermont schools who have flying the flag. Uh, Milton School District, who are flying the BLM flag due to student advocacy, they have a policy that states district flag polls are a form of government speech, thereby maintaining the distinction between government speech versus private speech. And I, and, and I think that's really important. For government, agents of government, we have to have a process to decide what flags to fly and what flags not to fly. Right now, we don't have a process or a policy, so all of our decisions are situational. So, what if a group of students wanted to raise a PETA flag? What about a Second Amendment or gun rights flag? What about a Make America Great Again flag? Currently, that decision is, is made by the sitting board members, all of us here today, but it could be a different group in a year or in two years who are making those decisions. And if the flag polls are indeed government speech, whose voices should be heard when making this decision? Tonight, we've heard from the students, but I haven't heard from, I haven't heard from the principal, who is the leader of the school. I haven't heard from staff. We haven't heard from the community whose taxes pay for the district. The students' voices are really important, and we have encouraged student voice in this district to be, for them to become engaged and global citizens. But the flag poll is not a, just a student flag poll. So I believe our role is to come up with a policy to guide our district in deciding not just the BLM flag, but also other requests for different flags, and also recently, the discussion about when to lower a flag. I've written a draft policy, and we're going to move it through the Policy and Governance Committee and Process. So for the EMS Black Lives Matter request tonight, I am supportive of granting the request to fly the flag from spring two thousand twenty to the end of the school year, based on their proposal, their research, and the survey by the YPAR team. But I'm not supportive of flying it in perpetuity. I'd rather have the board deliberate on a policy and agree on it before we give a long-ranging approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Anyone else? All right, seeing that.
What's, what's the motion? So I make a motion to amend the motion to approve the flag flying from spring two thousand twenty through the end of the two thousand twenty school year.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Gulick, thank you. All right, so the motion as amended. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Commissioner Curry?
Um, so as a commissioner who participated in the same decision in the past for the high school, we, um, we did hear, um, a lot of similar data and, um, a lot of similar reasoning, and so again, I'd just like to thank you all for doing that work and, um, and really being present around this issue as it affects you all directly and your peers. Um, you know, for me, the situational decisions that the board makes all the time, um, begin to form patterns and precedents, and I think, um, these kinds of precedents can drive policy. So, it's not troubling to me that, um, I've voted before and will vote again tonight to, um, support your request to, uh, raise the Black Lives Matter every year. It was something in the last motion that we left out, um, just kind of overlooked it because it was new. And, um, for me, the, the reason I support that is because the flag is another form of expression to give voice to students who are on the receiving end of all the negative outcomes that you all documented with data. And so as, as that expression, you know, as that opportunity arises, just one more time to, um, make the community aware of how damaging racism is and, and how, um, much it undermines all of us as a community in terms of what we could actually be and who we could be if we can erase racism eventually. And, and I know that's everybody's dream, so, you know, for me, it's all the more reason to not only raise it at Edmonds, but on every single school campus in the district, and I just really want to thank you all.
Commissioner Gulick, thank you, Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, I just want to say, I.
I'm happy to talk about this as a policy, but I, I'm a little concerned that, you
know, we're going to over-policy ourselves. I don't think we need a policy for every, um, single event that occurs. I also, um, believe we may be a government institution, the flag poll may be a government, uh, entity, but we're also an educational institution, and we are tasked with keeping our students safe and teaching our students and being inclusive, and I think that's really important as, as we look at this, that yes, maybe we represent the government, but we also are an educational institution, and it's really important that we keep all of our students safe all of the time.
Any more? I would just like to acknowledge again, um, our Edmonds Middle School students, and I also want to acknowledge.
Yeah, are you still there?
Jeremy Demink, um, and, uh, the University of Vermont, because, you know, collaborating with those institutions of, uh, secondary, uh, higher learning, uh, is critical to role modeling for us. So, we embrace any opportunity to work with, um, those post-secondary institutions, so thank you for your, for your involvement. And your website is amazing, to be able to read about each one of you and your contributions, um, and to witness your action last year and your student-led activity. It's nice to see you working with the faculty and staff, um, and again, the hard work and the maturity it takes for Henry to write the school board, um, and that leadership and, and Year to come tonight and speak on behalf, um, is why we volunteer to be on the school board, to see student work in action, um, and to see the education evolve at your school and the difference that you're making as a team. So, thank you again for your leadership, and I appreciate the hard work that went into this.
Are we going to vote on Mike's motion?
Yes, so we will vote on Mike's, Commissioner Fisher's motion.
So the amendment was to fly the, um, BLM flag at Edmonds Middle School, beginning in spring two thousand twenty, EMS flag be raised during Black History Month, and that it remains flown until the end of the two thousand twenty school year.
And just to be clear, what we're voting on is whether to amend the motion on the table, and the motion on the table is, uh, a perpetual raising of the flag from Black History Month to the, uh, first day of summer. So you're voting on amending, whether to amend?
So those in favor of amending it from Black History Month to the end of the school year, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, so the motion does not get amended. Commissioner Wick?
So we're back to the main motion, which is the every-year thing.
So all those in favor of flying the BLM flag at Edmonds Middle School from the beginning of spring of Black History Month through the end of the school year, every year and continuum? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, the motion gets passed. Uh, Mr. Demink, could we have the, uh, YPAR team come over with our communication specialist, Russ Elick, so we can take a, a group picture?
Mike, can you hear me?
And we also have something, uh, from the superintendent. Yep, right, here he is. Thank you, so.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Superintendent O'Bang.
Greetings, everyone, can you hear me? My reception hasn't been very good.
Yes.
Okay, I, I've only heard part of the, uh, conversation my reception's brought here, but I'll make it quick. I'm on my way actually to the National Alliance of Black School Educators Annual Meeting and Conference. It'll be, uh, my privilege to report the, uh, the accomplishments of our, of our students in, in support of Black Lives Matter. I do want to sort of make a quick statement just to recognize their efforts. Um, I would take a, a second to recognize the Edmonds Middle School students who are here today with a proposal to raise the Black Lives Matter flag at their school. Again, we are seeing thoughtful and engaged students speaking up and stepping up to lead the way. I commend these students for using their student voice to advocate for social justice issues that impact just, not just our community in Burlington, but really society as a whole. I also want to thank these students for engaging in the process and following the procedures set in place. They started from their own school and navigated up to all the adults to be presenting to the board today. And I am pleased that the board is open to hearing our students on this matter. This type of student engagement is what we strive for in Burlington School District. I thank the students once again for their courage. Congratulations, everyone there, and for also the staff that sort of guided and support these students. And, uh, congratulations to the board on their decision.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang. Russ, do you want everybody, so, YPAR team, you want to come over? Uh, why don't we stand in front of the projector, uh, screen, and then Russ will take the picture? Anything on the screen? We can turn it. Next on the agenda is.
You messed with his mic, man.
But yes. Okay.
So, last time I was here, last month, we were talking about the building team, the construction team's efforts to try to trim down the budget and still meet the goals of the project. We're still in the process of doing that. The revised schematic design has been completed and put into the hands of our construction manager for the next round of pricing. We do have a summary of, well, let me back up a little bit. We, as one of our updates that we just released on Sunday was an update to staff and faculty because they hadn't really heard officially what's been going on with the project. And they had put in an awful lot of time and effort to help guide the, give us input to help guide the design. So what I'm showing tonight really is what was presented electronically to the staff this weekend. It was supposed to have been presented to them live this afternoon, but being a snow day, we missed that, so we'll reschedule that. Part of the update was a memo to them explaining that this is still a moving target, and this update is really still a snapshot. This is not the final design. I would not be surprised if the next round of pricing still comes in over budget, and we're going to have to keep trimming away. But we do have, we've made a lot of progress, and this, I want to just, oh, sorry. Here we go. So I just wanted to highlight a couple things in regard to the program, which is the use of the space. So the number of classrooms, we have 39 in the existing facility, and the proposed design as it stands right now is 42. The average size of the classroom is going up by about 35 square feet, average size again. We found that if we do a lot of demolition of existing classrooms, we're compromising some structure, we're adding to the cost of structural reinforcement. So we're going to try to do as little of that demolition of partitions as possible. So we're going to retain as many of the classrooms in the current size, but the average size is still going to go up. We do still have a number of small classrooms, small group classrooms, what we're calling breakout spaces. There are none of those right now, and in the new design right now, there are three. When we talk, let me back up a little bit to general classrooms. These are, again, not specialty classrooms, so they're, these do not count, this count of 42 classrooms and the average size are for general classrooms that you might see for history, English, that sort of thing. They're not, and math and writing, they're not science labs, they're not music rooms, or not graphic labs, computer labs, that kind of thing. They're just general classrooms. There is one conference room in this existing facility, and that's a problem. And the new, the current design as proposed will have six conference rooms spread throughout the facility. Administrative and support space improvements. Now, this would include administrative, guidance suite, the health services, MLL, special education, the para lounges, or the para lounge, I'm singular, intensive special needs, student support, professional development, faculty lounge, storage, and IT offices. So all of that right now, all together, is about 13,500 square feet, and the new proposed is about 21,200 square feet. I think this is really telling to me as a citizen, as somebody who's constantly learning about the state of education in America, that this really speaks to the broader role that schools are asked to provide in their communities. It's not just reading, writing, and arithmetic anymore. It's, there are a lot of social services that are being provided in the school system, and this square footage really reflects that. Just in the administrative and guidance suite, we have an increase of almost 2,000 square feet. Health services, more than doubled in size. MLL, almost tripled, or more than tripled in size. Special ed.
Multilingual?
Yeah, multilingual, what is the second L? Multi-language learning or something?
Multilingual liaisons?
That's it, I'm sorry. Multilingual liaisons, yes. Special ed increased a little bit in size. ISN, well, you can see it here, but there are increases in all or most of these areas.
What's ISN? Sorry, Tom.
Intensive special needs. So these, let me see, the description, I want to make sure I get this right. This was produced by our architectural team, so I want to make sure I get this right. Descriptions below include information regarding spaces and areas only. It's not really about the renovation scope. This is just about the square footage. In science, about, we're looking at about 1,000 square foot increase. It's going to be relocated to D building, and all the labs will be full-scale science labs. Fine arts would be relocated to A building, and that would be a slight increase, not a lot, but a little bit of increase there. Design technology, again, not a huge increase, but, and it would be in the same location with a few smaller areas added for storage. Library is a pretty significant increase in space over 2,000 square feet. It would be in A building, level three. It would also include some breakout rooms, some acre space, screen room, screen room and guided study. Athletics and PE, now, this includes the addition of the auxiliary gym, so that 8,000, almost 8,000 square foot added space, a lot of that is taken up by the new auxiliary gym. Music would be an increase of about 800 square feet, one additional practice room, some additional storage, and we hope that if we can afford it, it would also include some better access. It would stay in the existing location, but there would be a better access to that, to those spaces. Food lab relocated to D building, level two, and that would be a slight increase in size. District on top, currently at 7,000 square feet. This is one of the area where there's a pretty good reduction in size. But the caveat there is that 7,000 square feet right now is a very inefficient space where District on Top is located. My understanding is that that was, they were put in that space because that's where there was room for them. There was some shuffling of other spaces around the district, and that's where District on Top ended up. They don't necessarily need 7,000 square feet, and the 5,800, we think, will be much more functional for them.
This is the alternative high school program?
Yes. Yeah. Cafeteria and kitchen, about the same. No changes in the theater size. BTC spaces, about 30, I don't know, what's that, 1,100 square feet additional space? Now, most of that, you'll see auto-batter repair, a reduction of about 200 square feet, and aviation tech, a reduction of about 200 square feet. But we're proposing with aviation to basically move the classroom to a space in a mezzanine above the aviation tech space. I think that's the case with auto-batter too, but again, this is all a moving target. There will be changes. This will be a little hard to see, but we can put this up online so you can explore it at your leisure. And I think, did you send it out in packets, so you can explore these? Obviously, from this distance, you can't really see the color coding and the labels there, sorry about that, but-
If you have laptops, you have it on your, it was in your inbox, your email.
So the first page of drawings is A building, levels one and two. Level one is at the very bottom. This brown area here is the existing music rooms. This light gray area is a proposed one-story corridor that would allow access into these rooms and also gets some natural light into those rooms. On level two, we've got the weight room in about, the weight and fitness room here in about the same location, and the lockers in this area, lockers and team rooms, pretty much a gut rehab. It's about the same amount of space, it's just going to, what we're proposing is completely rip it out and start over and reconfigure it.
More efficient.
Much more efficient. Let me see, another feature on this that I'd like to point out is right here is a new elevator. And this elevator would come from the main lobby level, if you will, and allow people direct access into the, sort of a sub-lobby of the theater and access into this level of the theater. As we all know, the theater is not very, not at all handicapped accessible. You have to really go roundabout to get in there if you're, if you have a mobility impairment. So this vastly improved that. I'm not going to detail all the spaces, but I just want to give you a rough idea of where things are headed. This area is the existing gym. This area here, this other dark blue area, is the proposed auxiliary gym. This is where we're proposing a three-story addition that would join A building here and B building up here.
So it's basically along the hill, the front entrance. You look to the left on the hill there, the stairs that go up to where the multilingual liaison's offices are, or C building. So we're shooting right out east side, heading east. Walk outside the front door tonight, and that entire sloped area of land that is, the soil is strong and can take the weight of a three-story building. So instead of wrapping around the school, the A building, we're going to focus our efforts on the new construction on that side of the building.
So, I would say right about there, where my wiggly little laser light is, it's about where the bell is right now, the famous seahorse bell. The existing entrance is about here, lined up with the edge of the auditorium. So you can see everything's moving east here. This building here is brand-new. It's very critical to be able to tie in and improve circulation. It really will help circulation among, between classes and help connect B building in a much better way. This is the next level up in that same area. So this area here is the courtyard.
Right out the window.
Right out the window here. And this is part of that three-story addition. All the green is new classroom, and this is where it ties into B building. So this is the existing B building right here. And then this is the third level of that building. Again, more, these are existing classrooms, these are added classrooms. And this is, I believe, one of the faculty lounges. I kind of hate to call them lounges, because it sounds so-
Yeah.
When I was in school, that's where the teachers went to smoke. Those days are gone. Here is D building. This is a new connector. So the existing connector into D building would be demolished, we'd build a new addition here, two stories, so one, two, three, four regular-sized classrooms and possibly one, two smaller classrooms. So D building would be given over to the science program, basically. The whole building is science labs, so we have four labs on the lower level and three more labs on the upper level. F building is, some of the spaces are just reassigned. No major, really no major additions except for another connector at the lower, shitting at myself, at the lower level here. So I do want to touch briefly on the challenges that are still facing us. The existence of PCBs in the building materials is still a really big deal, and it's becoming more of a big deal all around the country. The EPA has said that if you have it in your buildings, you have to deal with it. So the extent of that contamination is beyond what anybody would have thought originally back years ago when this project was first conceived. So that's going to have a big impact on cost, and it doesn't contribute to the program. The other factor that's really stressing the budget is structural reinforcement. These buildings were all built to 1960 and '64 building standards, and once you get into a building and do the kind of renovation and additions that we're proposing, you have to bring your building up to current building codes. And that's not that hard when you're talking about adding sprinklers or updating your electrical system or your energy systems. It's much harder when you're talking about updating the structure. And- So I do want to touch briefly on, on the challenges that are still facing us. The existence of PCBs in the building materials is still a really big deal, and it's becoming more of a big deal all, all around the country. The EPA has, has said that if you have it in your buildings, you have to deal with it. So the, the extent of, of that contamination is, is beyond what anybody would have, have thought originally, back years ago when this project was first conceived. So that's going to have a big impact on cost, and it doesn't, it doesn't contribute to the program. The other factor that's, that's really stressing the budget is, is structural reinforcement. These buildings were all built to 1960 and '64 building standards. And once you get into a building and do the kind of renovation and additions that we're proposing, you have to bring your building up to current building codes. And that's, that's not that hard when you're talking about adding sprinklers or updating your electrical system or your energy systems. It's much harder when you're talking about updating the structure. And that's what we're facing here. And again, these are budget stressors that will not contribute to the program. And that's distressing to me, but it's, it's a reality that we're facing, so...
And clarifying that, you understand, I mean, I know you get on the first bound, that you won't see your dollars. They're going to be, you know, in mitigation. So a lot of that, you understand? Okay.
I, I often like to use the analogy is, because most, I would assume a lot of people in this room are homeowners, and, and you may have, may or may not have been through a home remodeling project, and you have all these dreams of having a major remodeling project, and as soon as they open up, up the wall, they find mold. So you have to deal with the mold. And, and you spend a lot of your dollars mitigating the mold, and it doesn't go into your beautiful new kitchen or your beautiful new master suite.
Thank you.
And that's kind of the, kind of what we're facing here.
We'll take questions. Thank you, Tom, for your presentation. The goal of this is to keep the board up to date with small snapshots. You can follow up with questions either through myself or directly to Tom, depending on the level of engagement, and Commissioner Pillsbury as well. So we'll take questions from the commissioners at this time. Commissioner Gulick?
Thank you, Tom. I think we should probably come to one of the B envision meetings, too, if we want more, more detail. But I do have, I'm just wondering, is there a point at which, when you keep uncovering these issues, is there a point at which we say, this building is not salvageable? It needs to be demolished, and we need to find land somewhere that we can build on? I mean, I hate to say that, but my brain is going there a little bit as we peel back these layers of onions.
I ask myself that same question every day. And I, I, I don't know if we'll get to that point with this project. I think, I think there's still possibilities to salvage this and make this a much better facility. But I think that possibility still is hanging out there, that, that maybe it's just not worth it. But that's not for me to say right now, and it's, and we don't have enough data to really determine that.
Okay. So Commissioner Curry, and then Avantchik.
Thanks for the presentation. I don't know if my native mic is working. Okay. This one? Yeah. Okay. You can keep that.
I can get to keep it.
So I have a few different questions. And first, thank you, and thank you to the committee for all the work. I, I don't necessarily need answers tonight, but I just would like to raise a couple things. One is, it would be really helpful to have elevations for these, and the reason I say that is because windows tend to be one of the most expensive construction components, and they also, the more glazing you have, less energy efficiency you have. So I trust you, I trust Black River, but it is a question, not only in my mind, but other people's minds who are familiar with construction materials and costs. So you don't have to answer that, but, you know, for example, if there's like more windows in the faculty lounge than there are in classrooms, or can we get, you know, skylights cheaper or block, you know, glass blocks, whatever, to reduce the cost of windows, which can add up? And which could be money well-spent in mitigation of hazardous materials, which leads me to my question about maybe for Director Library, and maybe you're involved, are we using, you know, applying for Brownfield's grants, looking at that? Have we talked to the administrator of Brownfield's and other EPA funding? So those are my two questions right now. And my third question is, I would at some point like to see a representation of how you would access, how you would travel and navigate the new layout if you were using a wheelchair.
Okay. Thanks.
And one more comment, which is that it concerns me that, like, the on-top solution was never a good one when we sold Taft. And, and I think it's caused a lot of problems, and I still think it's a problem. And it concerns me that we're actually reducing the speed, space, even if it's more efficient. I just, I have really strong concerns about that, and at some point, I would like to hear more about that program and how it's going to be built up in a positive way rather than on the receiving end of constant, kind of, being minimized and marginalized.
Thank you. So I won't go into discussion, but what we'll do is we'll take those questions, and we will respond accordingly and distribute our, our responses to the whole board. Commissioner Avantchik.
So when this project was first sold to the community, there was a lot of talk about, I mean, one of the big selling points was that we're going to take building A and do this big wraparound around it. And recently, we found out that the wraparound is not happening. So what are we losing by not getting the wraparound?
We're losing some square footage. But I think we're also losing the, 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 the extra cost of, of building where that wraparound would have taken us. I mean, that, the, the south side of A building was, was really problematic soils, and, and again, we would have had to go down really, really deep to bedrock, and it would have eaten up so many of the project dollars without being visible. It just, that, that's what we're losing. We're losing that opportunity to waste a lot of money on, on structure that was, you know, too expensive.
Okay. And my other question is about the environmentally friendly impacts that we're building into this building. I believe it was called the CHIPS. Are we still going to be able to include those features?
We, CHIPS, yes. Short answer is yes. CHIPS is still on the table. CHIPS is similar to LEED, and it has several different levels of certification. And I think the original target, or one of, one of the targets that was talked about before my time was to, to shoot for the very highest level of certification that we, that was available. And that is probably not going to be achievable. We're, with this next round of pricing, we're looking at what parts of CHIPS are going to be achievable? What, what's the low-hanging fruit for CHIPS, where we can still achieve some certification under CHIPS and be proud of it without overspending?
Commissioner Wick, and then Fisher.
Yeah, Tom, thank you. I would just ask, or maybe you can give me comfort, that at the right time or times, the architects and others, or whoever is the right group, will continue to be mindful of the fact that there'll still be about 1,000 kids needing to learn for the couple of years that this project is happening. So as the redesign evolves into something, are they keeping in mind, what is the plan for keeping the 1,000 kids educated productively during the construction?
Yes. That, that part of the planning is called phasing. And the, the, the good thing about the wraparound design was it allowed us to build a lot of new classroom space before we demolished any building. So we could, we could move students into the new classroom space prior to the demolition and renovation. And that opportunity is, doesn't exist in as big a way anymore. So it does, it does squeeze the, the phasing plan. It makes it more difficult. And anytime you're, you're stressing a phasing plan, you're also stressing the budget. So it's, it's just another factor that's, that's making this very interesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Wohl. So, Tom, one of the big challenges is the, the current building has all the different levels, right? Somebody referred to the, you know, walk me through as a wheelchair. So with the revised design, how many flights are there from the bottom to the top compared to current?
That is a good question. I guess it would, I don't know if this is still on.
It's still on.
I, I think that, it depends on if you're still counting building E or not. Right now, building E is still on the chopping block, so that it would be temporarily retained for flex space for future capital projects and other district buildings, and then removed entirely. Once it's removed, then they'll, then this facility will have fewer levels. But even after the renovation and new construction is done, and E building is still there, as far as I know, E building is not going to be part of BHS or BTC. It's not, it's, it's a building on our grounds, but it's, it's not part of the building. So I think we're losing, right now, there are a total of seven levels, I believe, and there'll be a total of five when the building's all said and done.
Okay. Thank you.
With new elevators.
And there'll be, yeah, there'll be some new elevators, and they'll be big enough for a trauma team to do their work.
Any other questions, Tom? So yes, we meet every Thursday of the month here at BHS, 6:30 PM?
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday. Did I say?
You said every Thursday.
I'm sorry. Every, every third Thursday. Thirty-third, third. Every third Thursday of the month at 6:30. So you're welcome to come. And we will be distributing minutes to the board members. Yes, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Wohl. I'd just like to do a friendly nudge. That would have been great to have this, these materials in advance. We could have read it. You didn't need, Tom would not have needed to walk us through that. And we've talked about being more efficient. And so I just, a gentle nudge. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Oh, we got to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, excuse me. Consent agenda, item B.
Want me to make that? I'll make that motion?
Uh, one minute. No, we're going to make the motion after we sign the release. So we're doing it.
No, no, we got to approve the consent agenda minus B.
Yeah, we're going to do the consent agenda B. We're not going to do that until after exec session. Yeah.
Is that okay if I make the motion?
So we're going to make the motion for consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 7B, which Commissioner Von Cheek pulled from the agenda. So we'll, I propose we, I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda without item B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda gets approved. Next, we will pull item B, the routine hiring recommendations.
So my question doesn't necessarily have to do specifically with the routine hiring that's on this month's agenda, but I did, at our September meeting on 9/9, I asked about the arts coach on the list and the PBIS RP coordinator, who were not on that list. And then at our October meeting, these positions were, were still not on our consent agenda. And I followed up with an email to Claire Yao and the board on the, the next day. And then I saw that on, at the October 15th meeting, the arts coach at IAA was on our consent agenda, except not under a consent agenda, was under BTC update along with the BTC interim director. There was no consent agenda on the 15th. So until this date, I still have not seen the RP PBIS coordinator position on our consent agenda. And part of my question has to be with, you know, being fairly new to the board. So I have questions on district hiring, which I also posted in an email that was back in October 17th. How does hiring work? At what point do hires get approved by the board? And how long can folks work in the district before being approved by the board?
Thank you, Commissioner Von Cheek. So the two outstanding questions, besides your host of hiring questions, which we'll write down and document for Z to be able to answer or respond. But right now, your, the arts coach was on the agenda.
I saw that on the agenda.
Yep. You're, you're waiting for the one position?
Right.
Okay. Are you, are you clear in the question of the one position?
I'm clear and confused.
Okay.
So on October 14th, I responded to Chair Wohl with the answers to your questions, which I thought I was supposed to do with an update on October 17th.
I never got that email.
So I sent them...
Okay.
So maybe we had some miscommunication. So if other people are confused, I'm happy to address that now.
Okay.
So for the arts position, that was actually on August consent agenda. So if you go back, you'll find that particular teacher in August on the consent agenda. For the...
She was listed on October 15th.
She was on August consent agenda. She was already approved in August.
Okay. I'll have to go back and look at that.
Okay. So, and I'm happy if you aren't able to find that to help you locate that information.
Okay. Thanks.
And then the other position that you were inquiring about does not go on the consent agenda because it's a personal service contract. It's not aligned. It's not a non-licensed position, so there's a memo for that position as well.
So it's a non-licensed position?
Mm-hmm. So it's non-aligned, which means it's not part of the teacher's contract.
Okay. I never saw a memo on that position.
This is for Josh Mayer.
Commissioner Fisher.
So does that mean that the board does not approve that hire?
We present that as part of the documentation. So there's a memo that is sent?
The administrative memo?
Mm-hmm.
But not on the list?
Not on the consent agenda, correct.
Thank you.
Did anybody see?
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the consent agenda usually includes two documents. One is a memo, one is a little spreadsheet that links to a Google Doc.
And then there's an additional memo if we have somebody that we're hiring.
Okay.
And that was provided.
In the August 15th?
I think it was in September.
Okay.
It's not in our board document.
I'm happy to research that. I can't, I don't have that information here.
Thanks.
So, okay. No problem.
So we have an answer to that question. So any non-a-personal contract, we don't see on the, we don't approve.
So we approve consent agenda is all the licensed people that work for the district. Everyone else? A memo goes out?
Not everybody else.
Not everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. So entry-level positions, you wouldn't see necessarily?
Or par educators. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I make the motion?
Any other questions?
Okay. At this time, no. So we'll make a motion to approve 7B.
I'll second that.
You made the motion.
Oh.
So can I have a second? Commissioner Gulick? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, the hiring recommendation B.
Oh, 7B.
7B. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. 7B is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Director Anderson, for clarifying your questions. Thank you, Commissioner Avantchik. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report, starting at B, Budget Education Part Two, EL.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to come in and explain the process by which I allocate resources for English learners. The document went out to you ahead of time, so I hope you've had a chance to take a look. I don't feel the need to run through every bit of it, but I would be delighted to answer any questions you might have.
So we'll open it up to commissioners for any questions for...
And if you need to take a moment and refresh your memory...
Commissioner Curry.
Okay. So I thought this was a really clear and helpful rationale, and, and I think it offers some kind of, I think it could inform our budgeting process in general. I think it's a nice model. My question is, earlier in the year, we heard from a group of EL teachers, instructional, maybe just teachers. And, and I just asked them, you know, what, what might be on their wish list? And I'm just wondering if you've had the chance to close a loop with them, and if there's, and if you foresee the, the ability to maybe include a little more, I think specifically, they were talking about books was a priority, but you probably know better. I'm just wondering if you, for, are forecasting this year a request for more of, you know, any type of resource, and if so, you know, would it respond to the ones they raised?
I would hope that, that my request and their request would match, if not exactly, then pretty closely. We are in frequent contact... We are in frequent contact at, at all levels. I meet with the elementary and middle school EL teachers once a month. I meet with the high school EL teachers, actually more frequently than that, because I'm here all the time. And when the waiting system that you've had a chance to look at for the allocation of resources in Burlington was developed, it was developed with input from those teachers. And so, we've all been keeping our eyes on our student numbers and our student need as it goes up and down. Frankly, it doesn't go down. It goes up, but it, it has changed in the way in which it's risen over the last couple of years. And we spent a lot of time talking about why that is. Just as a, for, as an example, while we are not seeing the influx of new refugees that we were seeing a few years ago, as the WIDA test raises its cut scores and its, its standards, or at least what they believe are their standards, fewer and fewer of our students are able to exit. And as I think I mentioned somewhere in the document, I think it's an obligation on all of us, morally and otherwise, to make sure that everyone has an opportunity, not only to demonstrate proficiency by means of that assessment, but to be fully proficient, not just socially, but academically in English. So, in keeping our eye out for which students and which cohorts of students, attending which kinds of programs, take how long to achieve proficiency, we, we learn a lot. And we, that's actually the substance of many of my conversations with the EL teachers. They do ask for teaching resources, and that's another interesting thing that's happened just in the time I've been here. Books seem to be what everybody needed. Now, people need subscriptions to online resources. And organizing that to get the, our greatest efficiency price-wise across the district and to make sure we can put those things in students' hands from day one, that's a really hard job. And I can't pretend it always works out. But yes, I'm in constant contact with the EL teachers and listening as hard as I can to their pleas for resources. I'm about to take to them a budget proposal for next year, which will not include a great number, I'm giving you a preview, perhaps I shouldn't, but it won't include a great number of FTEs, but it will include more professional learning and also support for students through their, increased support for students through the use of their native language and increased support for the co-teaching pilot that we're running this year, which is turning out so far to be pretty successful. So, I look forward to discussing all of those requests, not only with all of you, but first with the EL teachers themselves.
Thank you. We'll open up for discussion Commissioner Pillsbury and then Gulick.
I appreciate, I appreciate your presentation. The two things that I was thinking about was, you kind of, you kind of referred to that we're not receiving as many new Americans or new people. And it was obvious that whatever the proficiency level of that test, WIDA, is going up. But my, my assumption is, maybe this is right or wrong, I'd like you to, is that if a student starts with this in preschool, that by the time they get someplace in middle school or high school, they are probably pretty proficient with the English language. Is that true?
That is true.
So, where our, is our biggest, is one of our bigger challenges, perhaps if we get a, a family with children who are pre-teen or teen and come to us and they don't have, they only have a native language, is that, is that something that we're challenged by or?
Yeah, I mean, to characterize, we could call it a challenge, but we could also call it an opportunity. And to tell the truth, I think it's, I, I think, I think the, the best way of looking at it without emotion or label is just statistically, we receive new students at every grade level on any given day of the year. Last year, we received a new family in late May, and we enrolled them. We've just received a new family relocated to us from Winuski. Earlier this year, we received a family with seven children, ranging in age from second grade to someone who chronologically would be a high school senior, but who hadn't limited and interrupted experience with formal education and no experience whatsoever with English. So, those students continue to come. We also have students who are born in the U.S., but who do not grow up in a household where English is the primary language, and therefore, their experiences with emergent literacy are happening in a new language for them. And in general, it takes about seven to ten years for students to achieve full proficiency, but a lot of that depends on their starting point, whether or not they have a strong literate background or academic background in their first language, a little bit on what that first language is, but most especially on the age at which they begin their journey. So, absolutely, a four-year-old will probably be successful before, successful at least by means of what it shows on the assessment, and so they'll exit from EL status before the end of, of grade school, of elementary school. But a seventeen-year-old who arrives, who's going to be a freshman at age seventeen, will struggle with almost every aspect of the new school experience. The chief of those are the most challenging of all, is gaining access to content and to concepts that are all presented in a language with which she or he is not familiar. So, yeah, it's a, it's a heavier lift by far as you go up the continuum. But we have always welcomed families that have students from all different ages, and we have no way of controlling, far less predicting, or even predicting, what age a student might, my, students might be on arrival.
Commissioner Gulick?
Yeah, my question was similar to Keith, actually. In that last scenario that you presented, that student who arrives as a freshman, assuming he or she is not proficient at the end of those four years of high school, can they continue in the system?
Absolutely. One of the things that we're trying to do a better job of than we have done before, and actually, I don't know if you were informed about this, but we've done a series of, of meetings in families' first languages at the high school and both middle schools this fall, which have been very well attended and I think very successful. And we were at pains to, to explain to families and to students using their first languages and using graphics and using as thorough an explanation as we could what it will take to graduate high school and to, to dissuade people from thinking, both parents and students from thinking, I'm here four years, I'm going, or I'm seventeen, so I must be a junior. And that news is hard to swallow, but I, I think it's really, really important for people to understand.
Yeah, I think with proficiency, it's gonna be more and more of an issue across all disciplines. You may not be proficient when, when you are a twelfth grader, so.
Again, I see that as an opportunity and a challenge. The opportunity is that, that the personalized learning plan process is gonna, is gonna force each of us to take a, a hard look at the individual pathways that students might choose, rather than just going lockstep from level one to level two to level three in anything. And I think there's an opportunity there. And then I also think it will create an opportunity for a conversation with each student to say, here's where you're starting, here's where you need to go. And we do do that now. We just, I think we don't do it as thoroughly as we might. We've been doing the family-friendly report card, which we share with students and parents at the same time every spring since I arrived, and every single time, families are stunned and students are stunned to say, wait a minute, I took a full year of courses at VHS and none of them earned me credit? How can that be? Or, you know, I've taken three math courses, which were EL math, elements of math, and pre-algebra. I'm still not where I'm supposed to be. So, I think we're really responsible for helping students chart those, their path.
Okay, I, how was the rollout, and I appreciated the slice, the acronym, the screener from last year. I appreciated that document where you explained what's happening here and now, and like the Flynn shortage from last year. So, how was that? How was the, the screener? Is that working?
It is working really well. And actually, for the first time after long, ongoing negotiations with the math department, we are very close to having a component for math that will also help us ensure a more accurate placement for incoming students in math. We do that really well through a series of not only assessments, but interviews that generally take place in families' homes. And that gives us a lot of background information and really helps prepare everyone who sees those reports to support the students the best they can. And we have been giving a really rudimentary math assessment, excuse me. The math department is now willing to collaborate with us and, and create something that will have a range of questions, beginning at about the seventh, excuse me, I think, second grade math level and go all the way up through calculus, so that we can take a look and place students more accurately there. Again, that's a challenge, though, I have to say, because there's no such thing as a content area that's language-free. So, we have encountered, just in the last couple of years, students who are well-prepared in math, but not at all in English. So, just understanding, understanding, you know, take out your book and work on problem seventy-seven would be a challenge for some of those students. So, we're looking at ways to try to make sure not only that we're precise in placement, but that we have appropriate supports in place.
And again, just to reiterate what Commissioner Pillsbury said, that the goal, the district's goal is to graduate within five years an EL learner. So, again, if people were unclear, I liked how that spelled that out as well. And then, lastly, to your point, you know, when you have these math programs, like you were saying, I think the misnomer, and I'm very appreciative, in the last three years, working with new American soccer players, they would not be qualified to enter post-secondary Division III schools because they never took the criteria of academics. So, even though they took all their math courses according to, you know, being graduates, they wouldn't qualify to play at a school soccer. And so, that was an eye-opener for me, and I learned that the hard way with them. And so, to know that the district is aware of that is, is great. I'm appreciative that you're talking about that as well.
So, I'm not gonna tip my hand too much, but you will see the word math in my budget proposal.
Commissioner Bishop.
Thank you, Chair Well. Thanks, Miriam. I'm curious about, more on the budgeting side, right? So, the waiting helps you figure out where the need is, right? So, your office is responsible for all the EL languages, resources across the district and all the different levels, elementary, secondary, middle school?
Correct.
Do you apply this to the elementary schools and then separately to the middle schools and high schools?
I just started doing that this year. To tell the truth, the effect is the same. But rather than thinking about nine schools, having them think about themselves as competing with one another for resources, it's easier to bring the elementary EL teachers together as a group and, and their needs and their, the design of their programs are similar. So, talking about, you know, how do we get pens and pencils, which is, that's something I could talk about all day, because every student in school should have a pen or a pencil, and it doesn't have to come from an EL budget. EL pencils are no different from anybody else's pencil, just saying. But it's easier to have that conversation with the K-five EL teachers and then separately with the four middle school EL teachers and then separately with the high school teachers and say, when we add up all your numbers and we look at last year's scores and we extend them out, as we have been doing for years now, into units, and we add those up and we divide, you know, the, the total number by the number at your school and your school and your school and your school, here's what we arrive at. And so, we've been doing that, but we've been doing it across nine schools. It, I think it's easier to have those conversations in the grade-level juncture. So, that's a process that just began this year.
Okay, thank you. We recently taught, took a long look at library funding, and we talked about the principal's role in library funding. What role do the principals have in, in EL budgeting decisions?
Fantastic question. Thank you very much. So, the first people, actually, that I took the waiting formula to, after it was developed and had been sort of vetted and discussed with EL teachers, was principals. Granted, principals have changed since that time, but we just on, was it Friday? Friday, I think it was Friday, had a, an opportunity for the directors to sit down with principals and have them come through and look at the ways in which the, we think about our budgets on both sides. And principals, quite frankly, have never been shy. They will have often advocated for additional resources for their schools. And I'm delighted to be able to say, I hear you, here are my numbers. Let's see, can we work together to figure out a way to do this? So, everybody was in support, for example, when I realized, when we realized last year that Flynn had been under-resourced. And so, it, it's not an argument. But if someone came forward, and this is my version of, of doing things equitably, so feel free to disagree, if someone came forward and said, I need another teacher, because I need another teacher and she could also help out with the blah, 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 I'm gonna say as respectfully as I can, sorry, that's not the way we do it. We go by demonstrated need of our students, as evidenced by this exam. So, it's not that I don't listen. I, I, I feel it's important to make sure that the system that we use is transparent and equitable. Now, if a principal says, I'll put up so much money and I'd like to buy a collection of books for my school, do you have anything that could match those funds? Generally, yes, I can meet the, that need.
Everyone else has left the call.
Bye. But I use the same basic principle for multilingual liaisons as they do for teachers. So, and this happens all the time. Principals will say, I want that multilingual liaison, not that one. Or they will say, I want that one here at this time, and I want them to stay until this time, because I have a great relationship with that person and I want them here. And again, respectfully, I will say, here are the numbers of the speakers of that language who are present in your school, here's how many other schools we need to serve who have how many other speakers of that language, here's the, the schedule that we figured out. If you can help us tweak it, we're open to that. I do that in collaboration with NIAZA. So, that sounded kind of mean and non-collaborative. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not that way in practice, but I will dig my heels in and not support one school over another. That's something I, I hope I will never do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Lastly, I'll just ask, with the new creation of VHS, of dual enrollment classes here at VHS, with sign language business, I think there's something else, I mean, there could be a future opportunity for you, like you were talking about, or something that could evolve. I'm just curious if that was ever in thinking for you.
What kind of opportunity are you, are you thinking?
You know, for EL students, if there's any, is there, do EL students in, that you know at the high school level take advantage of dual enrollment?
Not as many as I would like.
So, I'm thinking of a class.
And there, I mean, I would risk being sort of pedantic here, but so forgive me on this. If, by definition, if an English learner were proficient enough to take advantage of something like an AP English class, they would no longer be an English learner. They would be a former English learner. One of the things I'm working very closely with Karen Vogel on is to gather accurate data, not only about our present EL students, but about students who were ever English learners and to learn what their trajectory is, whether or not, in fact, they make it to dual enrollment opportunities, to advanced placement opportunities. And if so, because I know they do, what were the conditions maybe that led to that? How long did it take them? What kinds of support did they have? I'm not meaning to say that an EL student couldn't take a dual, take advantage of a dual enrollment opportunity, but just remembering that almost all content, especially at the advanced level, is embedded in language. By definition, most EL students wouldn't have the proficiency in reading, writing, listening, speaking. listening, speaking to take full advantage of those opportunities.
Got it.
But the former Ls, yes, indeed.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to expand upon that. Dual enrollment, there's one thing, but flexible pathways, internships, all the other alternative kinds of ways that students can learn. Do our EL students take advantage of those opportunities?
They do. And actually, that they do now, I'm proud to say, more than when I first arrived at Burlington. A great example is BTC.
Yeah.
But I just met, I'm on the steering committee for Burlington City and Lake.
Right.
And from the ground up, we said, if we can't make this accessible to English learners, then let's not do it. But we have a hard time attracting English learners to that program because it's so non-traditional. So, BCL just came and met with us on Monday with the multilingual liaisons, and we said, you know, let's go to students' homes and explain, because many families are fearful about a non-traditional model. So, we can do more in the way of outreach. But yes, EL students do take advantage of some flexible pathways. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation and your documentation and the timeliness of it so that we could all review it before you came. So, if we have any follow-up questions.
By all means.
I look forward to them. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you.
Look forward to your budget presentation. Yeah, thanks. Next on the agenda is the FY '21 Budget Planning First Update. Director Labrie.
Thank you.
I'm going to provide just a brief update on the budget development process here. So, first of all, just as a reminder, so tonight we had the EL presentation, and at the meeting next week, we're going to have a similar opportunity to hear from Laura Nugent, our Director of Student Support Services, talk in particular about the way special ed staffing is allocated through the process. So, you'll hear something similar on that front next week. And you will also be getting next week, as Miriam alluded to, the, kind of a first view of what budget recommendations are coming from school principals and our department leaders. So, that's all forthcoming next week, just to kind of keep people advised of what's coming. For this week, there's no kind of major updates, but I did want to address a couple of questions that were submitted after our last budget discussion. So, one of the questions was kind of just an observation about how much money goes to wages and benefits and salaries and that sort of thing, and how, there was a question about how that compares to other industries. I don't know the answer to that. There's probably an interesting research project that could be done. But I did look on the National Center for Educational Statistics, kind of US Department of Education, just at kind of what does the nation do with respect to schools, wages and benefits and that sort of thing? And, you know, the data's a little, it's not perfectly apples to apples, but I thought it was reasonable. What I looked at was, I think, based on 2015, '16 school year data that was reported there, and it looked like the national average in salaries was maybe 57% of the budget and benefits, 22, 23% of that, which compared to us, again, we were like 56% or so on salaries, so right in line there. Lower, actually, on benefits in aggregate. We were down more in the like 15% range or so. Hard to say for sure why, you know, I can't like kind of, you can't really dig into that data, at least not at the top line. So, that's kind of where we stand vis-à-vis some of those national figures. It'd be interesting to know a little bit more about what is different about that, but again, it's hard to tell whether or not that's a true apples to apples, so I'm not going to say I swear that it is. But to me, it looked like the closest comparison I could do without making a massive investment of my time in looking at the data. So, that was one question. Another couple of questions that did come up, and it got into a little detail. Folks, remember, at the budget discussion, we talked about the way we can look at the budget by function or by object. Object being like the things that we buy, that we spend money on, whether those are wages and benefits, or whether they're supplies and so forth. So, one of the questions was kind of about how we manage that. Specifically, it was, in a given year, if an object code, you know, one particular object code has excess funds and another has, is, maybe doesn't have enough to do what we want to do, how do we respond to that? And the answer is, in a general sense, kind of along lines of what we talked about in the library discussion, that we allow funds to be moved. Now, there are caveats to that, like, for example, if someone, if a school says, oh, we want to move money out of a line related to, copy your leases and put it into supplies, I'll say, no, we know we're going to have to pay for those leases, so we're not going to be able to take the money out of that line. But on the other hand, if they want to move money from supplies to books, from contracted services to dues and fees or something like that, we let them make those transfers. So, and I think that's a, you know, not only a good opportunity, as we've talked about before, to give principals a discretion to make those choices, but also, it's preferable to have them go through and make those transfers within our financial system so we can see that they've actually moved their spending authority from one object to another, as opposed to an alternative, which is to say, well, it's okay if you spend over the amount in one area, we just want you to spend less and more. In effect, we're doing that, but by forcing them to make the transfer, we're ensuring that we can still come in kind of in aggregate within our budget, as opposed to letting them overspend in one area and hoping that they have sufficiently offset that overspending in another area. That's kind of a, not as reliable approach, because you're hoping that people just do that, you know, have their own discipline. So, by using the system that we have, the tool, the software that controls it, it gives us a measure of control. So, that's a little bit, there's actually one other question about object codes, and that was, as a board, can you discuss prioritizing one object versus another? I mean, the answer is you can discuss, of course, whatever you want. I would say, generally speaking, I wouldn't advise it in that that's getting into the choice of like, exactly how do we want to accomplish this, right? So, if you said, well, I really want you to spend the money on, again, like supplies, you know, as opposed to books, as opposed to something else, I would say, generally, wouldn't be how I would recommend you do it. I'd leave that to the principals, to the directors, the conversations they're having with their staff. But, but you can do it. If there was an area where you felt really strongly that you wanted to do it, it can be done. So, let's see. So, those were most of the questions. There's a few other questions that actually came in from Commissioner Walts, who's not here tonight, and they, probably, at least one of them, I think, is going to be addressed by Laura next week, so I think I'll just wait on those, since they were her questions in particular. So, those are kind of the questions that came in so far. Again, next week, I think I mentioned, oh, the one other coming attraction next week is, as a reminder, we're going to talk briefly about the surplus funds that are left over from the prior fiscal year, just to remind you, like, give you and put a hard number on what that's going to be, and also remind you of kind of the options at your disposal for how we spend that money.
And then, we'll have our first budget forum this Thursday night at Hunt at 7:00 PM.
We also, yeah, thanks, Roy. There's a budget forum, not our first, I mean, we've had, but we've, it's actually our last one, but yes, it is, there is a forum at Hunt at 7:00. So, yep. So, anyone who's interested can come to Hunt Cafeteria, 7:00 PM, Thursday night.
Do you want to just share what the other ones were?
Yeah, we had a session for families of English learners and New Americans that Miriam and her liaisons organized and facilitated, as well as there was a session for special ed, families of students receiving special ed services. That one wasn't well-attended, but the English learners' one, I think, produced some real value that I know is informing some of Miriam's recommendations that she's going to bring forward.
Great. That was my follow-up question, how they were attended. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much, Director Labrie.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is Item D, data support. Welcome, Karen.
Did you want to talk about this?
Do you want me to introduce it?
This isn't, yeah.
So, I'll go back to four, we'll share this one. So, what we have here tonight is an action that we wanted to share with you about adding some staff capacity, specifically in the data team area. Karen's going to talk about the, like, what we need and why, why we need to do it. I wanted to, I guess, just kind of set the stage, which is to say that this request is really something that, to some degree, we foresaw, although I think we wouldn't say that we knew exactly how challenging it was going to be. But folks may remember that last budget cycle, we had a request in there to add some funds specifically to support that data teamwork. That one ended up not making it across the finish line, so we haven't had that, but what we, so we've been doing the best we can, but we have faced a challenge in order to comply with the regulatory work that we need to do in terms of providing all the student data. And you've probably heard some of this either from us before or through the grapevine about some of the challenges with the state's new longitudinal data system. And so, that's really what's driving this request. And I'll let Karen speak to the particulars of the request and the details, and I'll jump back in when I can be useful.
Thank you. So, this is, this is just a, this year request to add a position, a 30-hour position, 30 hour a week, and it's a database assistant. So, what we're finding is that with the new state reporting requirements, it really, and I've spoken here about this before, and I've spoken to Mike and Claire individually, but we're still, you know, it's a huge lift for us to comply with the new state reporting system. It's, and this is happening across the state, where this has really created a whole new job. It's a, it's, it's a big, it's just a huge thing. So, it's really more, in my opinion, it's more than even one FTE. So, what we're trying to do is, for this year, get someone to come in and work 30 hours a week to assist our student data manager, Gloria Ormsby. Currently, she is just really tapped trying to get this work done and hasn't been able to really do a lot of her other responsibilities. Her job has changed quite a bit. So, we're hoping to help her with some of the, a lot of the tasks especially that she, that we don't need someone with her level of skill to necessarily do. She just has to do, she's been doing a lot of legwork and fixing of errors and things that are, is very time-consuming. So, we're optimistic about this and hope that we can just get things to run more smoothly. But this is a huge shift. The state reporting is a huge shift. There's a huge new level of accountability and work, and the state, because this is new for them still, it's evolving. Their requirements are not always clear. The system is new, and so they're still just, you know, getting it up and running, and they're still adding new things to it. We just had a new pre-K reporting requirement added into the mix of something that was already incredibly comprehensive. So, so we're just doing the best we can to stay positive and, and get that done, but we, but it's a, it's a different ballgame for us now. So, thanks for your support.
Thank you. So, everyone had an opportunity to read the document, and now we'll have discussions or feedback. Commissioner Wick?
Thank you, Karen. Sounds like a big job. How are we doing? I've read the memo. Are we, are we still behind with the state? Are we in good standing with them yet, or how bad is it?
We're behind. We're behind right now. We, there are lots of submissions. Right now, we've had to leave some of our work on a previous submission from last year that we've already spent just countless time on, but it's not completely error-free and certified yet. We've had to move on to some of the more current things because we, you know, they're, they're kind of holding it and not giving us data that we need for funding, you know, for direct cert data for meals and things like that. So, we're just doing our best to be as strategic as we can and use our resources as best we can, but we really are not where we would like to be with what we have into them and that is really certified and accepted fully by them as being complete. So, yeah, it's been, it's been hard. It's been a hard juggling act. Thanks for asking.
Commissioner Karen?
I'm just wondering if other districts are having this problem, if you've talked about sharing resources and, you know, maybe offering a full-time position that could be split.
Yeah, good question. So, I think one of the positive things about this, this challenging situation, is that the folks across the state have a great community, data managers and technology people, which is, you know, different roles a little bit in different districts around the state, but they really have a nice way of communicating and working together, and I really don't know what we would have done without that community. I think that community has also been a great support to the state in their trying to figure it out. That, that group of people has done a lot of the heavy lifting of asking the right questions and pushing and creating shared resources and things like that. So, I don't know what we would do without that. And we definitely hear from around the state that this is affecting everyone and in similar ways. We have not, we have worked with some folks from other districts to share and get a little, you know, consulting support, but we haven't thought about, like, could we share an actual position? But it's certainly something I would consider. Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, at this point, I really think we need a whole, like, a full person, though, not someone who's necessarily split, but maybe somewhere down the road, we could, we could do something like that. But definitely our, that community is super important.
I was just thinking, for this year, if you're offering 30 hours, it might be more attractive to find someone to offer 40 if Wunuski needs help, and they have a smaller data.
That's a great idea.
They might be willing to pony up the other 10 hours. If it's helpful, maybe they need more, or maybe they already have somebody.
Yeah.
But it's a small enough district that it might help.
I think that's a great idea. I would love to send that out to the group, and, and we will do that, you know, just letting people, we already have done that a little bit, like, letting people know, this is what we're thinking, you know, because people know other people. And actually, someone in South Burlington was just hiring for a really similar position, and so she was saying, oh, you know, we had some great people apply, maybe we can connect you with some of them. So, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
I think it's, and we've had chats about this over the last, I don't know, few months, but I think it's, the board should know that the AOE does not take the same viewpoint that everyone is struggling, and they have said that we are an outlier. And so, it's one of the reasons I'm supportive of this position, that we need to get in their good graces, and there's some work that we can do to find out what, what really is the truth and help, maybe it's Secretary French who needs to see, maybe the board needs to understand what's really going on. But there's definitely a disconnect about whether we are in the median or an outlier.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Yow has spoken to superintendents at superintendent meetings about this and found a lot of shared pain in this. The AOE maybe portrays it a certain way, but I think that in, in hearing from other districts, it's been rough all around. I think that in little tiny districts, things can be different. You know, you can sort of power through some stuff manually that we, at our scale, can't really do the same way. So, so as I've said, talking to you here before, we are disproportionately affected by these decisions by the state for many reasons. One is because we're a large district, and another is because we're a complex district. We have alternative programs, we have lots of New American families, and we just, there are just reasons why this is... are just reasons why this is, has a different effect on us. But yeah, and, and the AOE has said different things along the way. I think people are in different places. So, but we do need to respond. This is really critical for us.
Can you educate the board in your new role and your background? I know you were a math coach, but do you feel that you have the skill set or you, would you be supervising this person, or does Gloria come with more expertise from the Flynn? Like, you know, and give us an outline of, you know, when we talk about, we, we are going to be scrutinized for adding a central office. And, you know, it's with confidence, you might say that you're getting yourself up to speed as everyone else with, with S L D S with the AOE. But, you know, in your mentoring, you know, are you, are you now the guru of data, or you're learning as well? And so, we're looking for someone qualified with experience with data that would help you or educate you as well, or as Gloria, like, just give us a overview of skill set and, you know, who, you know?
Right, right. Well, I, I was a software engineer for a long time before I became a math coach, and that is helping me incredibly. I did a lot of database work, so I have that background. Gloria has been amazing and really does have the skills to work with the database and write these complicated queries and things that we need. The position that we're trying to hire for this year is really more of an assistant position, and that person will mostly be assisting her with tasks. We, we don't expect them to come in with a high level of database skill. So, we're going to, you know, add this position and have that offset some of the tasks that have taken a lot of Gloria's time that don't require the level of skill that she has. So, so, that's our idea for this year. For next year, I am going to be proposing that we add a position that is a little, you know, level above that, someone who really has more of a handle on database work so that they will be able to handle more of that than just someone who's in an assistant role.
And then, the new reporting requirements from, there's a, there's a finish line, correct? In this new integration?
I hope so. You know, it's really been interesting. I mean, when you say, you know, do we have the skills or are we learning? We're all learning because a lot of what we're learning are the business rules of the AOE, you know, less about databases and more about, okay, what are the requirements and how do we comply with those? And that's where the AOE isn't always clear on what their requirements are. So, that can cause a lot of extra work and time spent to try to figure that out. So, we're still learning, and the AOE is still learning. So, we have a brand-new, just for example, we have this brand-new pre-K reporting requirement that never existed before, and the AOE is sending us stuff net, this week with information about that. So, it's, it's, it's coming at us, and we've got to react quickly to what they're giving us as far as this is how you're going to do it, these are the codes you're going to use, this is what full-time and part-time means, like, all of that kind of stuff. It's really a challenge. I hope that over time, you know, we and all the other districts in the state can sort of get our tools, you know, in place to deal with this, and the state can do their part by getting their documentation and their tools in a good place, and that over time, I think we'll see some, you know, some real progress. But right now, we, we are not in a place where this is smooth sailing. We have a lot of work to do.
And a clarifying question. This was in our budget request last year. So, last November, this was part of Central Office's request for a part-time data assistant or traffic person.
Right, so, we've been just dealing with it without that. And, you know, and I know, everybody's busy. Everybody has way more to do than they can. Everybody works really hard, and it's not fun to add a central office position. How, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I weren't here today to, to ask for this and put this in place. This is really important. It's not about we're busy and we, you know, it's something that we really need to do.
And you want to share one last thing? In your day, in your given day, are you inputting with Gloria, or are you more managing the district personnel requests? Like, what's your, your greatest demand?
It's a, it's a, it's a combination, you know, for me. I think it's important that I'm hands-on to some degree with her, but, but she's really doing, you know, the bulk of it. I, I have had to be really involved. I've had to take a lot of my time to work on this, to figure out requirements, communicate with the AOE, and take portions of it from her to help out, or there would just be no way we would, you know. I'm also, you know, I'm trying to make sure that she's okay in this. That's been a challenge.
Any other questions? Commissioner Carey?
You said you were a software designer?
I was a software engineer. I had a whole career being a software engineer before I became, before I got my teaching license and became a math coach here.
So, you went right into the coaching position? Did you ever teach in the district?
I did some teaching, yeah, not for a long time, but I did. And then, then when I got here, that was my role. So, I did that, I started in 2010.
Teaching in 2010?
Teaching, well, teaching before that, and then, when I came here, I, I came on as a math coach, yeah. But I had a long career as a software engineer before that. And that's really helping me now.
So, we're talking about data management in the district, right?
Right.
And there are, there are people, help me understand it. There are people all around the district working on that particular topic. And one of them you've mentioned is Gloria, is it Ormsby?
Yes.
So, who is Gloria Ormsby? What does she do?
Okay, yeah, sorry. I did have them in a slideshow that, that other time that I was here. So, Gloria Ormsby is our student data manager.
Student?
Student, well, that's her title, you know? That's sort of a legacy title, but student data manager. So, she is, works for the district, and she is really the one who's responsible for the state reporting and lots of internal work on our databases and systems. And then...
So, the new information about the pre-K kids goes to her?
Yeah, well, but so, the thing about this is that she's, she's dependent on, you know, lots of people in the district who interact with our databases. We have Power School and Elevation and Goalview and all of these student information systems that are interconnected. So, the way those interact, the way we get data entered in and taken out, you know, depends on lots of people. Administrative assistants in each building are crucial to us having accurate and usable data. So, the role that, and Dana Baron used to have Gloria's role, I don't know if you remember him, before her. And in Dana's time, this, this part of the job, which was the state reporting, was tiny compared to what it is now. So, when Gloria even signed on for this, this was not how this was advertised, that she would be spending all her time with this new state reporting system. So, yeah, and we have, you know, we have a data manager at BHS. We have other folks, registrars and people who are really critical in this, in our data work.
So, there are data managers all over the place?
Well, no, 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 they're not data managers.
People who are managing data.
There are people like the person who's sitting at the front desk of the school, who answers the phone and, but who also has a really important role around, you know, student rosters and student information and enrollment and attendance and all that kind of thing in each building. They're not a data manager, but, but now that we use data more and more in this world, we have more and more people and more and more information that is critical.
So, if I were to ask for, like, attendance data in the district, that would go to a bunch of different people, and that's why it's so unwieldy?
No, 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 sorry. Maybe that's not clear. No, we have, I'm the point person for, you know, data requests, and we have a data team and, you know, we, for, for that type of thing. What's, what, the reason I'm here tonight is because the state reporting requirements, where really Gloria is our one point person, although it, it takes more of us than her to do this work. She's the one who is extracting this data, you know, understanding the state requirements for reporting it and reporting it in. So, she's our, she's our one person doing this. What we're, what we want to do is get some assistance for her in all the work that she's doing. Yeah, we do not have lots of data managers. We have lots of people who, who touch the data, you know?
Okay. Well, I just want to, you know, it's nothing personal, but it seems to me that we're, it's kind of a broken record, that we heard a lot of this last year. And I thought that by hiring your position, we were going to come to a solution to all this, and here we are again, same, same issues over and over again. So, that's my comment.
Okay. Commissioner Pilsbury?
I have two comments, and they're going to sound snarky. They're not meant to be. I love you, Karen, but I also love our students. And I just remember when, when someone was pointing out that some of the schools needed more teacher staff to serve our students, we were told, oh, wait, they're not out there. We can't afford it. It took a while to get, I think it's like, was it November? For us to vote to hire two new staff. And then, this year, we wanted to, we found out the libraries weren't funded sort of equitably, and that took about two or three months to get that done. I don't know if it's done yet. I guess they do have the money. So, it feels like this, this is going to pass tonight because we know we need it. But boy, when we come to serve our children, it is a fight. And that may sound snarky, but I, I came here to make sure that our children got served. And it seems like we have to fight to do that. But you need help too. But, you know, I have, I have 25, 30 years of Burlington School District annual reports, 56, 60 pages filled with data. I have a 14-page one from last year and before that. I don't have any information about what the kids are doing or what the type of, our challenges are, our opportunities are. I really would like to have more information about our, for talking about this. That's my snarkiness. We need more information for the taxpayers so they can really understand what's going on, not stories, but data. And when we ask for more support for our children, let's make sure that we have the same kind of, feel the same kind of need that you're making us feel about this position. Thank you.
And maybe a clarifying question for Commissioner Pilsbury. With those reports, you know, and seeing them, I know Superintendent Bang and Director Leibler had said that, you know, that information is available, it might always, always be printed in that annual report, but that we should get some clarification we can at a, you know, after the meeting. But I, I hear you, and I remember you bringing those samples of past annual reports to present that seem a little lighter in weight and, and, so Commissioner Curry, the Gula?
Yeah, so, I was just going to offer a motion to accept the staff request for the funding to create this position, and, and then we can discuss the motion so that we move along.
So, we'll have first Commissioner Pilsbury, did you want to speak?
No, it's okay.
Okay. And then, then you want to offer the motion? Is it for this year only, this position?
To support the staff request.
Okay. Do I have a second? Commissioner Gorman, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to just confirm that the reason why the data has been particularly difficult to gather this year is because there's a new legislative requirement that flowed down to the Agency of Education that was mismanaged at the AOE level, and that all districts in the state are in disarray trying to achieve compliance. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah, I believe that's true.
Do you want to, do you want to just clarify the legislation or what, what it was specifically for the board?
Um, if someone wants to know, I could ask the staff to do that.
Or we can find out. We'll follow up in an email. Okay. All right. If that's all the discussion, then we'll vote on it, the position. Commissioner Wick, do you want to?
I think we just vote, right?
I don't, do you want to, is there a formal motion? It's just based on the position, the salary? Want to state, we can create a motion?
I did made a motion to accept the staff request for funding to create this data position.
All right. Do you want to? And I believe it had a second? All right. Then we're good. We won't have to include the salary amount. Okay. All those in favor of funding this position, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed? Any abstentions? All right, then the motion passes. Thank you, Karen, for presenting.
Thank you.
The information that we appreciated. Great, thank you. And thank you, Director Leibler. Next on the agenda is item nine, Commissioner Fisher and Wick, Board Self-Governance.
We'll make this easy, right, Mike? We're going to defer this to next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I second that.
Thanks.
Onward.
Next is item 10, District School Year 1920 Priorities. Commissioner Fisher and, and Wick to review and approve the board's priorities.
Thank you, Chair Wolf. So, Commissioner Wick and I met with Director Prusak. We did a bunch of cleanup, and then we also brought this to the Policy and Governance Committee and did a little tweaking, and I think it's a little more, at least it, how I envisioned it, the priorities that the board set, some indicators that we can measure over the year, and some actions that can be taken by the superintendent of staff to it in, I have a losing slate, to address those priorities. So, I guess I just want to open it up for comments, questions for the board, and then we can, well, actually, I'll make a motion to accept these district priorities for the 2019-20 school year.
May I just correct that? I think it's, my apologies. I think it's the pri- priorities, indicators and actions as, as stated.
Yes, thank you.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wick, any discussion? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you. So, I just want to share my experience as a commissioner with this entire exercise, which was not a positive one. And I don't mean to put anyone on the defensive, and I'm just saying this so that you know where I'm coming from, but in both meetings that I attended where these came up, I found the discussion very difficult to participate in, and I found that it was not well facilitated and staff was very involved in the conversation, and I couldn't really tell when the time was for the board to talk about it. I'm not able to come to the Policy Governance Committee meetings, nor should I, do I think this should be a pa- a committee discussion because it's the board's. So, my overall experience with the process, starting with our retreat, was something that I found unsatisfactory, specifically with regards to these priorities, indicators and actions. Personally, I'm not supportive of the board adopting these as our annual priorities. These are the issues for me. The action for indicator number one, there's this mid-year survey of building program administrators. We're almost at mid-year. Examples of desired increased site-based controls. It feels to me like this emphasizes school site-based control, which is what we've tried to get away from in terms of building more system-wide improvements and standardization that's more equitable, rather than having balkanized campuses decide what their individual priorities are. And it feels like the building administrators have worked really hard to get away from site-based controls, so maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but that language concerns me. Same with organizational resources. It seems to me, as long as I've been on the board for over six years, each building administrator has, would never had the opportunity to say they don't have enough resources, has come forward and said that, as we just saw with the libraries. And the equity formula has been on the table for modifications in the past year. So, how does the equity formula fit into this, fit into the actions? And we've talked about this and asked for this. Student to building administrator ratios and compensation seems basically like a cost-building exercise to me. I don't understand the point of, you know, looking at, we look at these ratios every year with the budget process, and they're adjusted in connection with the equity formula. So, that's something we tried to institutionalize, and I don't see that reflected here. And I worry about losing that and then having to have that erased and start all over again. For priority two, the indicator says, "Measure K9 reading proficiency using progress monitoring ASVAC scores." This seems simplistic to me unless progress... This seems simplistic to me unless progress morning, progress monitoring is where all the details lie and I'd be interested in what those details are. Are we talking about WEEDAS scores? Are we talking about proficiency-based indicate, data that the board has not seen? What are we talking about here? S-BAC scores are notoriously culturally hegemonic. They basically serve white, middle-class students that can show up and learn and then other students tend to do poorly. So what, what's this telling us? It's not telling us anything we don't already know. I think we're trying to move to a district that is actually looking at proficiency-based learning and S-BAC scores are something we just have to comply with for federal funding. So I'm interested in whether there are multiple mechanisms for progress monitoring, what those are. Working towards the achievement gap by improving outcomes for all students involves so much more than instructional practices. Was there a discussion of all the other aspects needed to close the opportunity gap, which would include climate, teachers of color, all these other practices that the board has been discussing for years and years and years with the administration? And I feel like to reduce them to just this academic piece around testing is, does a great disservice to our student body. I can't, for priority three, in terms of looking at choices, who's getting choices of classes? How does this tie into Act 77 around proficiency-based learning and the goals we had under Partnership for Change? If we're just going to look at choice and challenge, how, what data is measuring challenge? If we have the, what kind of data do we have to track choice? And why are we tracking choice if there's inherent bias in the system? How are we going to uncover that? Could we track choice and challenge by race, gender, income and ability? And if we're just going to ask students about challenge, how is that going to give us subjective data? I, I guess I just don't understand where the, where the, you know, kind of deeper critical thinking and analysis is in this document. And so I clearly got lost in the discussion and did not really find an access point to participate in a meaningful way.
Just to clarify, back in June, we're not, nobody's asking the board to reapprove these three priorities, which the board itself approved in June. So it sounded like you were having some fundamental concerns about the priorities that the board had already approved.
Well, I was, I got the priorities, but then I was waiting to understand how all these priorities would actually be measured.
Yeah.
And so when we're talking about the academic, the achievement gap, all I see is a kind of taking a very narrow academic approach, rather than actually looking at how the achievement gap is closed through multiple practices and pathways.
So, and, and you might recall, it was either July or August when we were in the BHS library with the administrators.
Yes.
We gave them the charge that indicators and actions are really within their purview and expertise. Yao then, Superintendent charged Victor, perhaps with others, to get together with the administrators, district leaders, and attempt to fill in indicators and actions for us, which they did, he did.
And that, that was the meeting that I found extremely frustrating, difficult. There was no opportunity for board conversation. There was no opportunity for board to weigh in on that. I think the board's responsible for establishing the data that we want to see to measure what the board's vision and goals are. Our job is to come up with those data indicators. If this is, you know, I guess if this is what staff has come back with, then I would oppose adopting this. I feel like it's insufficient and needs to be more robust.
So I would say in general that yes, this is what Victor, as the
Designated.
Designated leader for the staff. So I'm not, it's not just Victor. And so staff came up with this. And then I think it was last meeting, it was referred to myself and Mike to work with Victor because you recall, he, he showed up and wasn't completely ready. So we kind of worked with him a bit to say, where's this at? And we cleaned it up. And so, yes, so this is what we and, and administrators have put forward as indicators and actions. And I
I think you misspoke, we as, we, so we looked, this was a collaborative process. The goal of the, the board this, this year with its priorities, and I'm not sure your experience in the past, was that we were in a collaborative spirit with the superintendent and the district. So we set our priorities as a board at the retreat and then we looked to the leadership of Superintendent O'Bang, along with his appointed district leadership and admin to come back to us with indicators and actions. So because we knew things would be set for the school year priorities within the faculty and staff, we knew that they would be working within the confines of what their priorities were for this FY 1920. So similar to what you're saying, you know, it, it does feel a little disingenuous saying mid-year survey when we're just approving this now. We waited at length for the superintendent and district, you know, the appointees to get back to us. So we didn't not, we did not have a lot of board participation in discussing the indicators and actions.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that
Point of order, you've had, I'm waiting patiently to respond and you spoke for a long time.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And you have not recognized by the chair.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. So I agree that, I, I share some of your frustration on how this played out, okay? This is, if I was designing, it wouldn't be like this. But I, I think that, that Commissioner Wick and I tried to work with this as best we can, could, and collaborate, as, as Chair Wool said, with the district staff on the indicators and actions. But, and I, I'm interested in a lot of what you had to say, right? And I have a lot of comments on it, but I don't think this is the forum to have a discussion. We've been working on this since, when, when was our retreat? June. And I haven't heard from you to have a discussion about this outside of a meeting. You haven't attended the meetings where we've discussed this. So as interested as I am, and I will have a discussion with you after this, I think waiting until November and saying it at a board meeting is not the right venue to have this discussion.
Commissioner Pilsbury?
I had some frustrations also. The first priority is, as Teen explained it back and she got my vote, it was, she actually lobbied. I mean, but I didn't expect it to have the indication, the actions that were here. I really liked the first one better than, it at least begins to get there, the principals are telling us what they need to have, have us, to meet the challenge, I don't know what the word is, but so that their schools are able to meet the needs of our children better. I think two and three, the threshold for student principal ratio and regional compensation, compensation is part of, when we negotiate with the administrators, that's when that should be taken care of, not in our priority. But you know what? You've worked so hard on this. It's not perfect. I'm going to go along with it just so we have something to start. And I just wondered why you didn't mention in number two, elementary instructional coaches, but you, and interventionists, but you didn't mention principals like you did for the middle school and, and developing school improvement. And I really want that role of our, whatever you call middle managers, principals, to be more important in our district. I, I don't know if that was an oversight or you just decided to do it that way.
I don't know. That's a good question, whether that was just a typo.
By the way.
But I think there's flexibility in this anyhow.
Okay. Excellent.
Commissioner Goulet.
I appreciate all the work you've put into this, but I don't think my appreciation of all the work that you've put into this is a reason to support it necessarily. So I'm wondering where the urgency is in supporting this at this time? I think it would be great to have some goals. I think they would be really helpful in determining what directions we take in some regards, but I also don't feel 100% comfortable with this.
Commissioner Fisher?
You know, I'll put this option out there. We can scratch this whole thing, right? We, you know, this was something that we came up with when we were talking about the strategic plan during, during the retreat and decided instead of looking at the strategic plan, we were going to use this tactic. And that's how we started, right? As much as work as I've put into this, I agree, if we all can't get behind this and say, we're comfortable with this, it's not, it's not my baby.
Commissioner Goulet.
I don't think we should necessarily scratch it or scrap it, but I also don't see the urgency in accepting something that we're not all really, not just okay with, but excited about. If this is going to, if this is going to drive our work, I think we, we should all feel really, really good about it and I'm not sure that I'm sensing that right now. Sorry?
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Can we, you know, in Victor's absence, is it something that, you know, requires a, a meeting that we could all attend to be able to review this document and get clarity? Or?
I, I mean frankly, I didn't sense a lot of passion with the administrators when we were doing this work. So
Right, right.
I just, can, I, can we just wait on it?
Yep. So you, you mentioned a couple of things. One was the urgency. I mean, ultimately, I tend to agree, however, we're almost halfway through the school year or at least halfway through the fiscal year, December will approach soon. So that's fine, you know, because I think it's, it's, maybe it's a good exercise. We, we did agree, at least by majority rule, on the priorities, right? That were probably, I think that would be unwise to revisit unless there was something egregious here. So really what we're, I think I'm sensing your discomfort with are columns two and three. What are the right indicators and what are the right actions? Ultimately, those we did rely on the administrators to come up with, to carry out our priorities. I tend to agree. I didn't sense a ton of passion. I sensed more of, you know, this is what I've been tasked to do, here's the result. And so we're getting something that may be a little uncomfortable, although in fairness to Victor and maybe myself and Mike, we, we did ultimately say, well, you know, I think we've got to take to some degree baby steps here because if we had, I don't want to, you know, somebody says, let the great be the, what is that phrase?
Perfect be the enemy.
Perfect be the enemy of the good. In other words, I get it that the S-BAC scores aren't a perfect indicator, but apparently the administrators couldn't come up with something that was better, except they did come up with the measuring growth. In other words, compare the beginning of the year to the end of the year disaggregated by group. So in other words, it's better than just S-BAC on the average. It actually says start a year, end a year. We get to measure growth. And I was attracted to that. I said, okay, if that's something objective, doesn't take an inordinate amount of resources, I'm willing to say, good enough. If that's what you've come up with, that's what we'll have to go with because it's going to be November by the time this gets back to the board. And I think they did put their heart more into column three, actions. We may or may not agree with a number of those, as Keith indicated, I think. Actions number two and three for priority one, maybe that really didn't, maybe it's not resonating with us, but, so I, I don't know. We're in November. If you've got suggestions, I'm certainly totally open.
Well, Commissioner Carey, he hasn't spoken, and Sowers, and then Curry.
I'll just say that I like the logic of this document and the way that it's divided up into priorities and cases and actions. And I view it as simply a guide for us to begin to try to figure the pieces of the puzzle and put them together when we're trying to assess a system as complex as we have here. So I like it. I mean, there are problems with everything and there are other ways to measure things that we can explore and discover as we go forward. So I support it.
Commissioner Sowers?
Yeah, thank you guys for all the hard work. I also had confusion over this document and actually had to ask Mike, because I was under the impression we were setting board priorities when we were doing this in the retreat and, and I was hoping this would be kind of a guiding light document, that when we were thinking about funding and thinking about our priorities, we would go back to kind of these guiding light priorities and not maybe get so much into the weeds. So I understand this has morphed into more of like the districts than the superintendent's priorities, but what I was hoping for was really, what is it as a board we want to focus on and what is it that we can measure and track and make decisions by? So, you know, that, my confusion over this document, I think I have, I've led to, I, I've been part of this whole thing too, of being really confused as to what we're doing all along the way. So I don't think my feedback has been really helpful and, and I'm sorry about that, but I do hope we can take the priorities because I think that's for me, the priorities was actually what I wanted, those, those three priorities, so that I think we can keep.
Commissioner Curry and then Goulet.
Go ahead, I'll wait. My short, in the absence of this document.
Let's say it didn't exist. We have mission statement, vision statement, strategic plan. We have a lot of things in place that can still guide a lot of our work. That's it. Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I mean, first, I want to say that I, I don't think it's okay to ever tell a commissioner, it's too late to raise an issue. I mean, people have busy lives and shit happens. So I don't like the feeling that another commissioner would tell any commissioner, it's too late to raise an issue. Secondly, I agree that, you know, if people are open to amending it, I think there's good reason to stick with the priorities as far as, I like that idea of guiding the budget process. And if, you know, there's a, I mean, I support, you know, the idea of, you know, sending a signal to the building administrators that we will support high-performing schools and hear from them through the budget process. I think that's a great idea of what kind of things they want to use. I would, I would really echo again that we ask for a better equity formula that achieves some of the problems we saw this year around libraries and around, you know, what Miriam was talking about. So it seems like, you know, if we could agree to at least establish these as the priorities for the budget process and during the budget presentations, ask for, you know, those kinds of indicators, like Miriam's template was a great example, then that feels like we're actually building some platform to use as a baseline for the future and capturing those indicators and, and that kind of data-driven approach.
Okay. Then I think that's what we'll do. So tonight we will look at adopting the priorities.
We've already done that. The priorities are the priorities.
I know, but in, in, in replacement of the entire document, our reaffirmation of our priorities.
Reaffirm the priorities.
Okay. And then we'll look to Commissioner Fisher and Wick with some wording that we'll look to building those platforms as we look at the budget cycle, budget building with Director Labrie and Superintendent O'Bang and the building administrators. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay, so we'll make, we will, there will be no action on this item tonight. Commissioner Fisher?
So you want me to withdraw my motion?
Yes.
And there is no motion tonight.
Okay, or are we reaffirming my motion? Or do you not care? No?
Didn't we already, did we already?
We already adopted them.
Approved these?
Yeah, they're approved.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so the, I'll get with you on what this, so I want to make sure I understand what the specific ask is. We're going to redo this, so if I like the priorities, then we can publish it.
Yep, great.
Super.
Thank you, everyone, for your discussion on that.
Publish that.
All right. Next on the agenda is committee reports. We'll start with finance and facilities and finance, Commissioner. And if your committee is, you know, brief, that's all we need. We can follow up. Okay.
You just approved evidence and you have to post it.
Great, thank you. Policy governance? Commissioner Fisher?
I think all of our work has come before the full board and we're going to start another round soon.
Great. Personnel and curriculum, Commissioner Carey and Commissioner Alwell?
No report, thank you.
Great, thank you. And then we have diversity, equity, inclusion, Commissioner Avanjik and Commissioner Curry.
We had a successful meeting at our last meeting with Director Sparks present, who talked about restorative practices in the district. And first and foremost, we have a resolution for the board to vote on. I forwarded the information today. The resolution was available on the agenda, however, the supplemental information was not. I can read the resolution. So Commissioner Curry moves to recommend the proposal to the full board on the condition that staff bring independent, third-party written verification that Medicaid revenue can cover the uses of funds identified in this proposal. And we are referring to a proposal called the CCRS Pilot Project, Connected Communities' Resilient Students, in which the district would hire from Minnesota, a consultant, Dr. Dr. Saeda Abdi, who has extensive experience in creating interventions for refugee and immigrant youth. To date, I think they've already had six meetings with parents and youth, two, two at each of the middle schools and two at the Burlington High School. And the EL families were very receptive to these meetings. So, the proposal that I emailed you earlier today requests for, so this is a pilot project that we would like to implement in our district. Dr. Abdi is a refugee herself from Somalia, who has expertise that is not available in our district. And a lot of the, our refugee families and students are, you know, come to us from war-torn countries, refugee camps, so have special needs or, you know, we need to deal with the trauma that they've experienced, as well as other students who have experienced trauma. And I sent a document that Miriam Eschahem-Kading. Sorry. Eschahem-Kading wrote to us with essentially the whys, the wha, the how, the, everyone who's involved, because there's other organizations that are involved in this pilot project. And I think we are requesting $50,000 that would cover this pilot project for extensive work with our new American families, essentially.
I can just add that this is essentially a mental health cost, so it's to prevent student disengagement and deal with mental health issues and promote family engagement. A lot of other strategies for achieving that.
Thank you, Commissioner Avancheck and Commissioner Curry.
Thanks for that motion. So, we can have a discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. So, thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury, seconded the motion. Yep, one minute, we're just seconding the motion. All right, so now, we'll have discussion. So, Commissioner Awal?
Yes. I'm sorry to sit so loud, but I'm in the car. I just thought I'd press a very heavy, as it is, it was used against EPSCG or Medicaid payers.
Kathy, Kathy.
Can you take it on your phone?
It's, it's really hard to hear you. Can you, can you speak, can you pull over or even put the phone closer to your mouth?
Okay. Is that better?
A little better. Go ahead.
I, I feel like this is, again, a problem with whether this is a legal use of EPSCG, which is Medicare reimbursement fund. And when you say a third party, that you're going to, you know, that, that's the K word. I thought you, who's the third party? Is it the Medicaid, who, at the Department of Defense? Because they're the ones that understand the law. And they should be able to tell us if this is a legal use of something. Because what I know is, you have these money and it's not directly paid for children and you, it's training again for teachers, even though I think it's very important to do this training. I am just not sure if this is a legal use.
Okay. So, the question is, funds used for training versus student, okay. Commissioner Curry.
So, for that very reason, because of our last conversation, we asked Director Lavery to confirm for us that it is Medicaid eligible. And he wrote the board a memo, which you would have received directly from Director, I'm sorry, he wrote the committee a memo, and Monica circulated that today.
Okay. Miriam, would you like to speak?
Yes, I just, I'm turned off, but no, no, I'm not. You can hear me. I'd just like to clarify something that I think I heard in the previous question, which is whether or not the proposal supports exclusively training for teachers. That is only one component. There is direct support to students, direct support to families, direct support to school personnel, as well as training for school personnel. And whoever it was that said this was primarily a mental health initiative is absolutely correct. However, it is not correct that it supports exclusively new American students. That's one strength that this particular consultant brings. However, she's not the only component of the proposal either. There's a coalition that reaches from the University of Minnesota to Boston Children's Hospital, to connecting cultures locally, to the EL Department, and several other entities who are collaborating to bring a different level of mental health support to students at the middle school level and also high school level than has previously existed through other efforts.
Thank you for your explanation. Commissioner Goach.
Well, Dr. Abdi, report to Laura Nugent.
Uh, to tell the truth, we, I'm not sure we had that specified, but Laura, the two middle school principals, Noel Green, the principal of BHS, and myself worked together to sort of vet not only who she is. She came here through, actually, a recommendation of colleagues in my multilingual liaison staff last year for a brief visit, and then we sort of thought about ways in which we might be able to work together. That's a great question. The full proposal has some, I hate this word, but has some deliverables and some ways of evaluating the effectiveness of various components of the, the initiative, as well as some for Dr. Abdi herself. But it, it would be a good idea to sort out who she's.
Ownership.
Yeah, ownership there. It's a coalition.
Thank you for staying and answering these questions. Commissioner Wick.
When does it start, the pilot program, and what's the duration of it?
It was proposed initially for this school year. And aside from one component, which was frankly going to run, move forward anyway, but it has already benefited from the collaboration, and that's the six meetings that were mentioned earlier, parent meetings, family meetings for new American parents and youth, and actually another one is scheduled for tomorrow evening at Hunt. Aside from those, nothing has started yet. We're waiting for approval. Because it's a pilot, we would expect it to end at the end of the school year, except for evaluation reporting, which would likely happen at this point in July. And then, depending on the outcomes, we would look to see whether or not this type of effort is yielding the kinds of results we were looking for, for the future. But the contract with Dr. Abdi and that coalition of University of Minnesota and Boston Children's Hospital would be for this year only.
Thanks for that clarifying question. Commissioner Wick and Miriam, Director Lavery, do you want to speak to the Medicaid, or just a quick synopsis of your memo that you sent us?
Yeah, I, well, the memo, I'm actually trying to pull it up right now, so I speak in an informed way about it.
Yes.
Good. Yeah, so, stand by for one moment if you don't mind. I guess what I can say is we, this is, this is kind of in the broad realm of social services that we're providing to, to students. So, the Medicaid language is actually pretty broad in that respect, and that's actually what I was looking up right now in terms of how we can use this, use this money. So, we think that this is completely consistent with the other stuff that, activities that we've been using Medicaid for, social workers and that sort of thing of, you know, from Howard Center, for example, or another expenditure that we've been using Medicaid funds for since before I started here. So, we didn't even have to change the, like, make any change to our Medicaid reinvestment plan for this.
That's great. Commissioner Carey.
Just a question, Miriam, so you said that, you said that.
I can hear you.
That Dr. Abdi wears several different hats when she performs her duties in the district.
Correct. I'll give you a couple of examples if that would be helpful.
Well, you already did. You said she was a student, a teacher.
Yes.
Around the district. So, I just ask, what percentage of time would she spend directly with students?
Actually, in the, the body of the, there's a, there's a chart with, yeah.
Oh, I see.
And that, so that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a component of family support, there's a component of direct support to students, and there's a component of basically training for faculty and staff. And I think those are pretty well-balanced. But the support, direct support to students and also home-based support to students is an important component of the whole thing. Without that.
Okay, thank you, I didn't say this, I just got this.
Sorry. There you go.
Great. Commissioner Fisher.
I just want, there's, there's a disconnect. I think this is targeted towards refugee and immigrant students or a broader scope than that?
The, the component that includes the, Dr. Abdi's expertise is focused primarily on refugee and immigrant students because of her background. However, she's a, holds a doctorate and is, has done this work with broader populations. When we were developing the proposal originally, one of a, a tension point in our secondary schools, both of the middle schools and at the high school, seems to be with the Somali and Mymy-speaking community and the Nepali-speaking community. We've had a number of different interactions between those communities, which have resulted in less than wonderful things happening. And so, at the suggestion of other members of this coalition, we would like to focus some of the mental health supports and the direct social supports to students on those two populations primarily, but not exclusively.
The reason why I ask is one document refers to that, right? That's the lead paragraph of the document that starts in red, that talks about CCRS being focused on refugee and immigrant students, but the other proposal doesn't mention that. So, is it really clear which, what focus we're doing?
Well, I'll give you an example. If, if Dr. Abdi were here and she was providing direct support to students, my guess is, we would be looking for students of refugee backgrounds, not necessarily her background, but refugee backgrounds, because that's her area of expertise to work with. If, on the other hand, we were working on the component of the evaluation, which mentions, and I'm just doing this like freehand here, I have, I don't have the document in front of me, mentions the YPAR group that you saw tonight, they wouldn't be focused necessarily exclusively on refugee and immigrant students.
So, so I want to make sure we're not wagging the dog here, right?
Okay.
The proposal is for money for the CCRS pilot.
Correct.
Including Dr. Abdi.
Correct.
It's not just for Dr. Abdi.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
So, just to clarify some more.
Thank you for pulling it up.
Yeah, there's four-tiered program components. And so, I want to say that, so community engagement, skills-based groups, individual therapy, and home-based services.
Yeah.
Four tiers, four strategies. But I also wanted to mention that, just to provide some more context, and we weren't really sure how much to go into the background on this, just because we didn't know how much the time the board had spent. Both middle schools experienced really difficult challenges in the last year that ended up coming to the DE and I in one fashion or another. And the adults in the building had difficulty addressing them in a way that enhanced and supported student success and climate. It's really, you know, challenging the climate in the middle schools, the kinds of situations Miriam described between, you know, two new American populations and other students who are, you know, not native, but white Americans. So, this recognition that the climate is being very negatively impacted by the lack of skills among the adults in the building is, you know, an opportunity to really embrace kind of comprehensively both students' mental health needs, which are spilling over into these kind of events, and then, you know, really supporting the, the adults to manage these kind of climate issues in a more comprehensive and longer-term way, in a more systemic and, and try and institutionalize some new skills in the, in the district.
Laura, thank you for this, and I appreciate, because not all of us can get to the DE and I committees, so even though it might sound repetitive, and we're not questioning you on, on the validity of this proposal, it's really just a desire and education of wanting to all be there and to understand. So, thank you for your time and your comprehensive, truly comprehensive proposal, I would say, the who, what, where, and when. It's rare that we get it succinct like that, and it was, I, I felt, on behalf of the board, it was a well-informed document. So, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Avancheck, for cajing my error or our error for not posting those documents and getting them out to the school board as, as soon as you did. And we will move on to motion. Who had it? Commissioner, did I own it?
Anybody make a motion?
Well, Monica made the motion.
And she seconded it. So, Monica, would you like to recite the motion one more time? Will we vote on it?
Commissioner Curry moves to recommend the proposal to the full board on the condition that staff bring independent, third-party written verification that Medicaid revenue can cover the uses of funds identified in the proposal.
Thank you very much. So, we've discussed it, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you for your work on this, everyone included and involved. Thank you. And that concludes our committee reports. Commissioner Fisher? You want to take us into executive session?
Yes, and I want to be clear because we do need to, I want to move, I move to consider executive session under 1 VSA 313A1, A, B, C, E, and F, because premature general public knowledge with the district, substantial disadvantage to discuss confidential attorney-client communication, evaluation of an employee, to make a decision of the, for a student.
1 VSA 3137.
And A7, for a student disciplinary matter. And the rest of these? And contract negotiation? Is that true?
Yes, update.
Okay. And a personnel matter?
And then, yes, okay. Great. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Move into executive session. Go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll move into executive session. We are back. Yep, great. Next word of business, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Wool.
So, we're still on TV, so you might want to sit.
I'm going to sit. All right. I'd like to make a motion, if it pleases the chair, be it resolved that the board chair and the board clerk be authorized to execute the resignation and settlement agreement slash release between the school district and Superintendent Obang, as per the terms and conditions of such agreement. Be it further resolved that in fulfillment of its legal obligation, the Burlington School Board of Commissioners commence a broad-based search for a superintendent of schools whose services are expected to commence as of July 1, 2020. And be it further resolved that pursuant to 16 VSA 241, the board authorizes the chair to request the advice of the Vermont Secretary of Education in connection with such search and any appointment resulting therefrom.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Pillsbury, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries, the resolution carries, excuse me. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Thanks again, Chair Wool. So, I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that with regard to the student disciplinary hearing held earlier this evening, that A, the student violated district policy as alleged by district administration, B, the student be expelled for a total of 90 school days, commencing October 1, 2019. A written decision in these regards incorporating staff recommendation. A written decision in these regards incorporating staff recommendations and other aspects of case management as recommended by district administration shall be provided to the student's parents and parents designee.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Goulart, any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution passes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Commissioner Pillsbury, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.